Question and consideration for the preliminary plat for Hawk Hollow subdivision, which is a standard subdivision located at approximately eleven fifty west thirty two hundred south in Nibley, Utah. The applicant is Nibley Hawk Hollow LLC. And I'd ask Levi to open up and discuss the project. He's ready.
Just a second. Okay. Sorry, just scrambling a little bit with technical difficulties here. So yeah, just, just as a introduction to this project, so this is, this is the Hawk Hollow subdivision. It's, it's located at about eleven fifty west and thirty two hundred south on, on the south side of thirty two hundred south there. And just east of, of the roundabout. The applicant, sorry, I'm gonna, I'm not, I'm not a good multitasker. My, my wife will be the first one to tell me that, so. Sorry if I'm stumbling while I'm trying to get this stuff going. But as, as a little background, a few months back, the, the applicant came in with a rezone request. And the, the rezone was granted, but with some conditions, one of which is that the property needs to be subdivided. And also that there needs to be a a, a land swap between Nibley City and, and the property to facilitate additional park space to the park, which, which is being developed as part of Nibley Meadows. If you can see that on the screen, I'm gonna pull up the presentation here in just a sec. Just the one. Pull this up, get that going for you. So you can see the layout and everything I wanna bring it up here for you. So this is what's being proposed, what you see up on the screen, this, this does closely resemble what, what the applicant submitted. In, in conjunction with the rezone, they, they did submit a, a concept plan that, that, you know, was pretty much this, this exact same layout. There's some, some modifications to stormwater that I'll discuss a little bit later. They did previously, they showed kind of stormwater ponds in different locations that, I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit. But as you can see, there's twenty-three lots in the subdivision. Just to orient you, thirty-two hundred south is, is that North Street? And then twelve hundred west is the street kind of on the left, left of the screen, so you can see those two accesses for, for the subdivision there. And then on the south side is, that's, that's open space and maybe I'll escape, so I can use my cursor. So this, this space about, you know, right in here, this is currently owned by, by the property owner, you know, this, this whole kind of square. But if you follow this line all the way down and, and this area over here, this is city-owned property. And so all of this, this subdivision is contingent on the approval of a, a land swap. And, and the agreement of that is, is the next item on the agenda will be considered. But I wanted to, to give you a context on the subdivision first, which is why this is kind of the first item on the agenda there. Like one is kind of contingent upon the other. So, so through that land swap, this part of the property, this, the city would would trade for, for this property adjacent to another park or a planned park to the south there. So expands that, that park space. So just a little bit on, on the subdivision itself. And, and I, I should also mention, this item on the agenda, I wouldn't, I wouldn't get too hung up on the details of that land swap. This is really to determine if the subdivision meets Nibley City standards. The land swap really should be considered separately from that. So, so I, I would, I would just advise you to kind of focus on, on if it's meeting Nibley City standards. You know, this is the, the planning commission is the approval authority for, for standard, for, for subdivision, for preliminary plat. And so, you know, for this first item, that's what I would focus on. And, and just in general, this, this subdivision does meet minimum lot size, average lot size, street frontage requirements for the R two A zone. As far as utilities, and I can go back to the plan a little bit. These have been reviewed and we've had, we've had a lot of discussions on, on utilities with the applicant, you know, with the city engineer, public works. And the, the final location, kind of the second bullet point of the water and sewer. It, it may be modified a, a little bit. We're working through kind of how to most efficiently provide that the best, in the best interest of the city. You know, to ensure water quality and other things, and, and Tom, Tom's been working on that, we've been, we've been coordinating with them. So one of our, one of our recommended conditions, and I'll, I'll go through all the conditions at the end, is that, that, that final location of the water and sewer line, it, it, it will be coordinated with, with city staff in conjunction with the final plat. So there, there may be some modifications there with, with those locations, but, but for now, you know, it has been reviewed and, and it can, you know, can work this way. Stormwater, this, we've, we've had really a lot of discussions on, on stormwater on this. So the reason why, and, and you saw concept plans before, there were, there were some stormwater ponds on the, on the property. We, we are trying to develop a kind of regional stormwater system that goes to the wet, to the wetlands, which are just to the west of this property, twelve hundred west. And if, if you wanna kind of know more of the details of that, Tom, Tom can get into that. But in general, we're, we're working with this property owner, and this really is tied into the land, the, this land swap and those details of, you know, as far as who pays for what, and that's all, that's all subject to review of, of city council. But, but in general, you know, we're trying, so that, and, and this, and this really is a better deal for the city if we can push the stormwater across the street there. That park area is gonna be a lot more usable if we don't have, you know, a small stormwater basin in the corner. And so that's what, that's kind of what we're going for there. There is, there is a Nibley Blacksmith Fork Canal on the north side of the property along thirty-two hundred south that's proposed to be piped. And this, this is, uh, this is consistent with what, if you, some of you might remember, there was a subdivision approved previously. A Hawk Hollow subdivision, open space subdivision, this is different owners, but anyway, they, they, they're consistent with the wishes of the canal company, they're, you know, they're proposing to pipe that canal on thirty-two hundred south. And then they have shown on the, on the preliminary plat, you know, cross-section improvements that conform with their transportation master plan and design standards. There, there, we do have a standard that you need to have a traffic calming when, if it's a local road coming off an arterial road like this, an entrance to subdivision. And they are proposing curb cuts for, for traffic calming there. Back here. Okay, I wanted to get into this detail, so the, the, we have a provision in Nibley City code which requires a pedestrian connection at least every six hundred and sixty feet for you know, if, if there's, if there's not a roadway connection, then it requires an eight-foot trail connection. Maybe to display this, it'll be better if I go back to this. So as you, as you can see, if you look on the right side of the subdivision, kind of along that east side, between that street which comes in, the inlet, and the trail adjacent to the, the park, it's a little bit more than six sixty, it's, it's about seven hundred feet. So it doesn't Yeah, sorry y'all. Be better if I, so between here and here, it's a little bit more than six hundred and sixty feet. So it doesn't quite meet that standard. However, we felt as staff that this, as proposed, is a better location than let's say if they put it here, here. And I mean, really, any, between any of these lots is, is probably not as ideal as it would be adjacent to the park and the open space. And so the next item on the agenda has a, a provision in the agreement where there's an exception to that provision in the code that allows them to, to design it this way. And staff is supportive of that, of that proposal, so it, you know, calls that out. But, you know, that's, I, I would say that item in particular is, is, I, I would call it a more of a legislative decision of whether you, you want to grant that exception to, to the code through, but, you know, by, by agreement. Because, you know, we have found that, no, it doesn't meet that, that provision, but but through the, through, through the the development agreement, it would. So there are also through the National Wetland Inventory, it, it is showing wetlands on the southeast corner of the property. And so we're, we're asking to require wetland delineation and fill permit. It, it does overlap with that trail, the, the wetlands that are shown on, on NWI. And so, you know, we, we, we're just, we just wanna make sure that proper process is followed for any, any required mitigation for the wetland or, you know, if any fill is needed there. As far as street trees, they're not shown on this plan, but, but, you know, we're recommending that it's a requirement of final plat. There, for a standard subdivision, oddly enough, there's not a preliminary landscape plan required, but there is for final plat, and so that, we just wanted to call that out, that, that the street tree requirement would be met. So staff's recommendation is approval of this preliminary plat. With the following, there, there's several conditions here, I'll, I'll go through them. One is that this ordinance twenty-five oh five, which is the next item on the agenda, this land adjustment agreement, and it's also a development agreement with the applicant, needs to be approved by city council. We're recommending that a note on the plat be, be added that property owners adjacent to thirty-two hundred south and twelve hundred west install and maintain landscaping and clear sidewalks. Particularly along arterial, thi- this is in Nibley City code, but along arterial roadways, a lot of times, property owners don't quite understand that. So we wanna make that clear right on the plat. Coordination with Nibley Blacksmith Fork Irrigation, who holds the water right on a land drain that relates to the property. Coordinate with, also with the irrigation company regarding impacts and changes to canal. And then there's also a canal irrigation turnout on the north boundary of the project. And we're recommending coordination with that property owner to ensure adequate flows and operations are maintained with proposed improvements. The next condition is a water model will be run to update the water model to ensure adequate flows are maintained. Costs will be billed with development fees, this will be in conjunction with the final plat, by the way. Same with this, the sewer model will be run to update the sewer model and ensure adequate flows. Costs will be billed with development fees. Acceptance of stormwater design is contingent on acceptance of land swap and regional stormwater pond. So that's that, I, I already described that, that stormwater issue, that really, it only works if, with, with that, with the land swap, so. I mentioned this, the wetland delineation and fill permit approved by ACOE is required prior to final plat approval. Indoor and outdoor water use calculation certificate for equivalent shares, financial surety and payment development fees required at time of final plat. And the last, this final location of water line and stormwater drain will be coordinated with city staff at time of final plat. Matt, that's it.
Yeah, thank you.
We're, we're happy to entertain any questions or anything you have. Tom's, Tom can get into more details on, you know, some of the design on the utilities and, and, you know, whatever other questions you have.
Is there a representative of Hawk Hollow that wouldn't mind speaking, or do you have anything to say, or? Okay. Okay, great. Okay, we'll open it up for discussion amongst the commission members.
This is a thing to this subdivision should have the question for Levi and on the, in city code twenty-one twelve sixty, where it talks about the pedestrian right of way. It doesn't specify anything in there on like curb cuts or accessing those paths. Is that like not allowed or? Or is that something that can be done? I know there's quite a lot of these throughout Nibley and like if you're, if there's any kind of rolling, this makes it hard, so if you're pushing trailers or wheelchair chairs or scooters or whatnot. Just accessing those, like going up on driveways, yeah. A lot of bigger curb cuts. So that was the one thing I kind of
I don't know. I think, go ahead, Tom.
I think you're identifying a couple installations in some of the more recent subdivisions. To just have a curb cut though, from a road, doesn't make sense if there's not a, an opposing trail on the other side. So we look at those individually and try to, if there is a trail that continues on the other side, then we would have the curb cuts that connect there. And in, in most cases, I try to avoid mid-block crossings altogether, just because people aren't really normally looking for them. And it, it creates a danger to to pedestrians trying to cross at those locations many times. But, and I think I know what you're talking about, but, yeah, those ones predate me, not that I'm blaming anybody else, but I can, cause he's not here. And yeah, I, I had the same thoughts, like why, why, why? And I promise it will look better at those.
I learned if you go back to the plat, but just point of clarification. Okay, so this is not all, this is just a standard artsway subdivision. But on the southern border, that's, that parcel will be essentially just dedicated to
Correct. Yeah, through, through, through a land exchange, and so the, the land, this can only go through if that land exchange is approved. So it needs to be contingent on that.
Can we take further responsibility to maintain the water or do anything with one?
Yeah, so we will inherit any deficiency, so the requirement for delineation and fill permit, that's a protection for the city. It, it's, in my opinion, it's encroaching that, that trail particularly, it's approaching into the wetlands. I think through a fill permit, it's going, going to be less than a tenth of an acre, so there shouldn't be any mitigation to it. But I wanna make sure that it's, that, that deline- or the delineation is accurate and that the road doesn't you know, it's not bigger than it's what it's shown on the National Wetland Inventory. There's that risk too.
So if it isn't that's figured out, there's not any ongoing responsibility.
No, we just have to preserve and protect it, we can't go in and fill it and destroy it, so we'll just have to keep it there, we don't yeah. But if we wanna put a soccer field in there, that might be an encroachment. Yes. Right?
The sidewalk on thirty-two hundred south that go through the property and actually connect to the other one, there's a, by the house between
So that, that's a good question, we, we did have, and this is part of the land swap agreement and extension of that sidewalk to the, to the west, cause there's also a gap there to the, where the roundabout picks up. And it's part of that proposed agreement for them to build that section of the sidewalk. But the other one, I don't think we included that, that would be on the city to, to finish that, yeah. There's a little gap. Yeah, so we, so we have we have the project that, that we just finished, where that sidewalk is, goes right up to the edge of Nibley Meadows, right? Or is there a gap there? Oh, the trail, you're talking the trail, not the sidewalk, yeah.
The one, the east boundary of this property would be eleven hundred west right of way, and that's supposed to be converted to a trail with Nibley Meadows. And that'll go all the way up and it'll kind of circle around to the east, and then through the frontage of Nibley Meadows, all the way to the Riggs property, which is where we stopped our project last year, or this year. We continued that, they should join right there. The only gap that would remain with this land agreement, if it, if it goes through, is that little section in the upper right-hand corner. It'll be a hundred and thirty feet that we'd have to figure out how to connect, work with that property owner in the future.
We have the right of way, right, we could build it, but
I'd have to check.
Yeah, okay.
I think for me, I just was curious about, given some of the history of my neighborhood and some of the difficulties my neighbors have had with fencing over canals and easements and everything, do we have any of those situations here? If so, have we remedied that and how we approach? We wanna identify those on these plats and everything to protect our citizens that are buying these lots.
That's, that's great too. So through iteration, the developer
there's issues with dead-end water lines, and the original plan comes off of thirty-two hundred south at the intersection, comes in and dead ends on that cul-de-sac, then it loops around the other way and then connects and dead ends on twelve hundred west on the south access. To mitigate water quality issues, they showed a, a loop that went between some property lines and things like that. And says we really would prefer not to have fences impeded on and stuff. So they've been working with us, great, we relocated up to the trail, so it's not gonna impact any property owners. Kind of back to your point or your question, are there any canal issues? The only ones are on the north facing, the north boundary, that will be piped. So there may be some boundary issues there, but we've been working well with Nibley Blacksmith Fork, and we have a permitting process now. And they, they should be able to get a fence as long as it meets their conditions and built according to their, their, you know.
I don't, I don't
I wanted to point out that we've been working with the developer to try to avoid those situations with the other utilities as well.
Yeah, good. Yeah, that, that's a good question on, cause the canal issue, and Tom, Tom mentioned, we, we are having some ways to mitigate that, but I think we can even avoid that in this case. I don't think there's a need for a canal easement. Cause I believe there's, you need ten feet on each side of that, of the center line of the canal, and I, I believe there's at least ten feet here between the property line and the canal, so I think, I think we're good there. I think we do wanna avoid that, we're, we're dealing with some headaches on that, if we can, even, even with mitigating measures, if, if we can be avoided, that's, that's ideal.
And I just feel like in any circumstance where we feel like it's not, I don't know, we can outright require that as a note on these plats, but just to protect people from misunderstandings in the future.
Yeah, the easement is there, but it might, that's a good point, it might be helpful to, to put something on there about limits on fences. Yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't, but I guess what
But it would be like if, if they needed access easement and and mining, for example, issues with people not being able to put a fence for access, cause the company doesn't want to fight that for someone like, or take your fence down, cause we need to get through here, you know, a part of the
Yeah, but in this case, it's not in their yard, it's in the park strip. And I believe there's enough separation there where they shouldn't have to have an easement on people's private property, like we have in some other places. I, it, it appears to me on this, based on at least the resolution on the preliminary plat.
The dome here, thirty-two hundred south, twelve west, you're saying that like the rear yard, park strip?
Yeah. And hopefully they actually do, we'll see. But we're at least gonna try. Yeah. We thought we would try.
Make a motion, we accept the preliminary plat for Hawk Hollow subdivision. If we take decisions stated.
Commissioner Shank has offered a motion to approve preliminary plat for Hawk Hollow subdivision, with the conditions identified through staff, second. Commissioner Reba seconded, so do we have a general motion to approve? Say hi. Okay, five, five to approve, zero, yes. Onto the next item. So we'll go to the next item, which is a public discussion on ordinance twenty-five five, the development and land adjustment agreement with Nibley Hawk Hollow LLC for the Nibley Hawk Hollow subdivision, for the adjustment of boundaries between city parcels and the developer parcel located at approximately ten fifty west, thirty-two hundred south, setting forth terms and conditions, including an exception to Nibley City Code twenty-one twelve sixty F three regarding pedestrian connectivity. I think Levi did a good job of introducing, introducing this, do we have any one signed up for public?
I, I have, I have more details on this.
Okay, go ahead.
Just, just, just to talk about the actual agreement. So, you know, there's a number of terms in this agreement, but I, I, I wanna be upfront that the reason this is on the planning commission agenda is because of this one provision in the agreement of the exception for pedestrian connectivity. Had that, had we not put that in the agreement, the rest of the provisions really are under the purview of city council. Now that said, if, if you see any issues with it, and you wanna make any recommendations to city council on those provisions, you're more than welcome to, but but just wanted to be clear that, that this agreement, which is, you know, setting forth primarily setting forth the conditions for the land exchange that, that we mentioned in the last item. It's, it's primarily a, a city council decision, and, and typically, they would make that decision, you know, out, outside of a planning commission involvement. But anyway, so just the specific conditions that are included is that the property line needs to be adjusted between the current Leon City property and, and right of way, the proposed open space that's displayed on the preliminary plat, which is the last item. Developer to design and construct a sidewalk, walk that connects the project to the existing sidewalk near thirty-two hundred south, twelve hundred west roundabout. Developers shall design, construct curb gutter sidewalk adjacent to city parcel and install, install water line, electrical service to the property. The city needs to vacate the right of way in twelve hundred west, and then the city agrees to grant this, this exception to Nibley City Code regarding pedestrian connectivity. So that's kind of a summary of the terms of the agreement. Uh. The staff's recommendation is approval of of this ordinance as we already kind of. Explain the reason why we're in support of the uh the exception to the um. To nibly city code for that pedestrian connectivity. We have met with the applicant um. About, you know, and and they've and 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 we've discussed and the numbers behind. What's a fair deal for the city? What's a fair deal for? For the applicant. Uh we're not presenting those tonight. Uh we're we're working on those. But as I mentioned, that's really more of a city council uh decision. It's more of a budgetary decision for the city. Uh so. Um. So that's that's kind of why we're we're not getting into those those details tonight. Uh but. But yeah, our our recommendation is approval for this agreement. I don't know if you had.
Thank you. We we did not have anyone sign up on the signup sheet for comment. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to come to the podium and speak? No? Okay. Well, I guess we'll close the public. Comment period for this item and then we'll move on to item number three for discussion and consideration uh for ordinance twenty-five five. Development and land adjustment agreements with nibly Hawk Hall LLC for the Hawk Hall subdivision. The adjustment of boundaries between city parcels and the developer parcel located approximately ten fifty west, thirty-two hundred south, setting forth terms and conditions. Including an exception to nibly city code twenty-one, twelve, sixty, F three regarding pedestrian connectivity. And with that, I will open it up for discussion. Um most of the commission, Troy, do you have anything? Carter? Brett? There?
No, you're still waiting for the study of the wetland. And that. From that connectivity will go off or extend then.
Yeah, so so and that was that was kind of addressed on the last item. It though. They they are they'll they'll be required in conjunction um with final approval to do a well and delineation and a fill permit. Uh for that. But that that was already, you know, kind of addressed with the preliminary plat.
Do you have a good motion? Here I'll. Approve um or five. Uh last, uh including an exception to a new city code of twenty-one, twelve, sixteen.
I'd say. Okay, we have a motion uh from Commissioner Reba to um approve ordinance twenty-five five aforementioned land swap. Um. Uh nibly city code or accepting uh nibly city code twenty-one, twelve, sixty, F three, second um from Commissioner Shank. Um, do we have general consensus to approve? Anyone say yes?
I'll be approving a recommend.
Oh, recommending.
Approving.
We need to restate that.
Sure.
This goes to the council.
Yeah, yeah, a mo- a motion to recommend approval.
We have a a recommendation to approve ordinance twenty-five five. I'll just say the whole thing, development and land adjustment agreement with nibly Hawk Hall LLC for the Hawk Hall subdivision and the adjustment of boundaries between. City parcels and developer parcels um. Setting forth items, terms and conditions, including the exception to nibly city code twenty-one, twelve, sixty regarding pedestrian connectivity with a second. Thank you. And with that, we'll I'll just ask for a general consensus for.
Generally. See if there's any further discussion.
Oh, okay, thank you. Do you have any further discussion? She keeping me on my toes. Thank you. Okay, then we'll put it out to vote. All in favor, say aye. That's uh five approvals, zero. Oh, any opposed? Okay, thank you. It's my first rodeo, so thank you. I appreciate.
Doing great.
Okay, all right. Item number four on the agenda. Another public hearing um for ordinance twenty-five four. Amending nibly city code nineteen twenty-four, one sixty, nineteen twenty-four, two sixty, nineteen twelve, forty, nineteen thirty-two, eighty. Nineteen twenty-four, two fifty, which uh parking requirements, including amendments to minimum parking spaces. And new development establishing minimum bicycle parking and allowing for alternative parking plan twenty-one, twelve, sixty, F three. Regarding pedestrian connectivity. Before we open it up to any public comments, Levi, do you want to introduce this? Please, thank you.
Yeah, um and this has been discussed. A lot, but it's been a while, right? If you haven't met for a few months, so I'll probably reiterate some of the things we've already discussed. Uh so on parking. Uh kind of the reason we're we're doing this right now, the existing parking requirements, uh they. They're they include minimum parking spaces based upon square footage, dwelling units, number of beds. Um but you know, the current standards are outdated. They've. We actually don't really know how long they've been on the books, uh but quite a long time. Uh and and there's just been some observation that they may be overly restrictive, which. Which this does have impacts on affordability, on the feasibility of of development, the design of development. And so that's kind of what brought up, that's the reason for. Um, these these recommended the the recommended uh changes to the parking ordinance. So staff has done research um looking at nearby cities, parking requirements um. And as well as the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual. You know, I would say one finding that came out of that is there's really no, there's no consensus. I would I I would say there's no true like best practice. For parking. It's really, it's a policy decision. What is what is the city? Um, what is the city's goals? What are what do we want? What do we want to do? Um but in in general. Uh trying to get it right so that we're not o- overly restrictive, I think helps in in other ways with economic development, with portability. Um, the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual, it's it's a, I would say. One of the better sources for uh data that's readily available, that's kind of nat- nationwide data. Um, so that's that's why we consulted that that parking generation manual. It does break it down based on, you know, average. Parking uh parking rates, eighty-fifth percentile and uh staff provided a a draft, you know, initially. To u- update the chart that was largely based upon the eighty-fifth percentile of parking rate. In this IT parking generation manual um. As closely as we could, I should I should say, you know, with that asterix because uh. Land uses either the way we have defined aren't the same as as theirs, the context of, you know. Is it suburban? Is it rural? Is it urban? Is probably a little bit different in our city than it is in um in other cities. So anyway, that that was proposed. Um but based on that and based on the discussion, you know. I I have to give props to Troy for, you know, Troy Troy did a lot of. Um, research on this and and observed and brought forward to the the planning commission. Uh that that those metrics were seem to be excessive um just based on. At at least on on specific um land uses in in the city and and what's provided and and the. You know, how much parking is is being observed. And so um so Troy provided an a- alternative. Uh updated chart for minimum parking. This has been reviewed uh and discussed with the planning commission. Um. And and Troy did provide an explanation and that and that, you know, his explanation is is in the agenda report, but in general. And you can you can speak to this more, Troy, if you'd like, but uh you know, Troy did a lot of research on case studies of cities of similar size. You know, staff's research was more based upon just cities across mainly across the state of Utah. Uh but but Troy's was was more based upon cities of similar size that have recently reduced their their parking minimums. So they've gone through this exercise so that, you know, that they're kind of they're they're not the outdated ordinances that. That, you know, a lot of the ones that we've ser- researched maybe. Um. Based upon that discussion, there was there was general consensus among among the planning commission. To go with the numbers that that Troy presented and so uh that's that's what's being presented here. Now, staff. Did take some liberties um. That of consolidating some of the um. Some of the categories just for sake of brevity, uh but. Uh and Troy, be- before this meeting ra- raised the point, you you can get into that on on your discussion if you want, but. Um, that there there may be some some discrepancies there, so I I'm not aware of them, so if you want to bring them up, you can't get. I I did, we did try to, you know, stay with with those metrics. Um, in addition to changing the the chart, you know, the of required parking. Uh, the following changes are also incorporated in here. So. We were allowing for an alternative provision of parking based upon a credible parking study, so. We've done our best to get these numbers where we think they're reasonable. However, we know we don't uh. Uh, we can't predict everything and and we understand that if if a development comes forward. Uh, they may be able to provide research which is. More updated and may and may be more valid than than, you know, what we have in our in our chart. And so that's kind of the reason for this. Uh this this would be subject to review. Um. And and then, you know, based upon that review, the the approval authority could. Um. Could approve, you know, potentially a a reduced amount of parking based upon that study. Um. Another provision in here is to only require the provision of parking with new construction. And this would remove the requirement for meeting the minimum parking requirements if if the use is changed. So this would just um, you know. There is some trade-offs with this provision, but this would allow for. Let's say a business uh finds a space suitable suitable and they feel like they have they have the adequate access and parking. Uh regardless of those requirements, they can move into an existing building and, you know, set up shop there. Um. And we can't, we can't tell them, oh, you know, you don't have enough parking for your business. Uh so really, it just applies to new construction. Um. Would be would be the change there. And you know, this, the reason for this is. Is to help with with economic development. If 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 businesses find that it's it's suitable, uh then that. You know, then we're not inhibiting that. Um, that potential, the. I I guess the the trade-off there is, you know, it could it could lead to some spillover parking if if they're us underestimating their. Uh. You know, how much parking they need, but that's the trade-off there. Um so that that is included in here. Um. There's also bike bike parking standards, which we've discussed, and these are largely based upon recommendations from. The Act of Transportation Plan, which is next item on the agenda, but uh um. Those are incorporated in into this. We we thought this was, this would be a good time to do that as as since we're going through this this exercise now. Um, so this is, this is our existing chart, just to put it up on the screen. Um. Not going to go through each and every one. We we can discuss each, you know, each one if you if you want to get into it. Um, this is the updated chart. Been a while since I put this together, so I'm trying to remember what I was doing with these these uh. Colors. Uh I I believe this this gray kind of tan is that those are ones that haven't changed. They're they're essentially the same as they were. Um. The blue. I I believe is um. Uh it it's indicating it's a different metric. It's different than than what than how we. Uh measured it or what we required before, so it's kind of apples and oranges. The green is signifying that it's a lower requirement than before. So I didn't see. Uh the majority of that, there's a few that are the same. Uh the majority of them uh are. Either lower, uh we're requiring less parking or uh they're just different. So like, for example, um. You know what? I think I misspoke. The green means it's lower, the blue, it's it means it's different. So like, for example, manufacturing and specialty spa trades, one space per thousand feet. Um that. Right now, we would just say it's one space per employee. Which then we have to go figure out, well, how many employees are here? And that changes and fluctuates, so that's a little bit difficult. I I think the square footage is more more appropriate. Um. Little bit more on the alternative parking plan. Uh it allows the applicant to conduct a study. Uh to determine parking demand and propose lower parking requirement based upon the study. You can take. As part of this, you can take into account shared parking with mix of uses. Um, and the city engineer reviews plan and study recommends parking requirement to approval authority. Um, bike parking is is based upon the recommendations of the Act of Transportation Plan. It's generally about one-fifth to one-tenth the requirement of number of vehicle stalls. Um. But it's not required for all uses. And um there is a standard for. The type of rack. I mean, it's pretty loose, but but just just so that there's two points of contact, it's just more usable. And then um parking needs to be within a hundred feet of of an entrance. So staff's recommendation is approval of this ordinance. Um, for parking requirements.
Okay. We did not have anyone sign up for public comment.
Um, nobody wants to talk about parking. This is like.
We want to. Item number. Five, thank you, which is the uh discussion and mis- consideration for um. Recommendation for ordinance twenty-five four, amending nibly city code. Nineteen twenty-four, six, one sixty, nineteen twenty-four, two sixty, nineteen twelve, forty, nineteen thirty-two, eighty, nineteen twenty-four, two fifty, parking requirements, including. Amendments to minimum parking spaces with new development establishing minimum bicycle parking for alternative parking. And with that, we'll open it up for discussion.
Going over the number of the draft.
Yeah, I'll I'll put it up on the screen.
Yeah. Wrong, but there's a lot of lines and colors and numbers. Uh, but there, when I was looking at, there was two numbers that changed. Uh, from the last discussion because under food establishments and offices. And on the last discussion. Uh, who's additions were uh six slash five. That I believe it says three and a half. And then offices were three and label as two.
Wait a second.
Or we have either number. I just wanted to call out the difference in the last.
So you're saying it was discussed three and and the draft says two? Or?
For office, yeah, offices was uh the last spreadsheet was showing three. And if this one just says two, right?
Yeah, and I thought that's what was on on your draft, but I. We can change. I mean, if the commission wants to change that, you can.
I'm I'm. The food establishments was listed at, there was. There was two food establishments, one of those is at six, one of the five. And uh. This one is listed at three.
Yeah, so if you want, i- if you want to. If the commission wanted to change that, that's. That's fine.
But.
Yeah, I might have been mistaken. I might have been basing that on an older draft or something, so um I don't, I'm not sure.
But I mean, I'm. From from my personal opinions, I mean, the the idea, uh and what I thought the consensus was in the last uh mission meeting was. Um, for these commercial developments, allowing the developer. Mission meeting was um for these commercial developments, allowing the developer to have the the flexibility on what they saw that he does. And so. Whether we go with the last discussion numbers or or ones presented tonight. That achieve the same goal to me.
Um I think. Still think the residential second dwelling should have.
I think it, I think it does, Tyler.
But then if you have a second dwelling, only in part, one space secondary dwelling.
Yeah, so, so yeah, so state code doesn't allow. More than that for a secondary dwelling, however, a detached accessory dwelling unit. Does allow to, and that's still, and that's still in the code. I don't think it's in here because it's it's already in the code and it's not proposed to be changed. I don't think unless unless I put it in by reference. Yeah, and that's per state code, we can't allow more than one. Yeah, or we can't require more than one.
Or in the code, we have to find maximum occupants.
It's really just based on what they tell us. So it's, so if it's a short term rental, they have to specify how many people they can rent it to. And and so if they say this is for twenty people, that's the maximum number of people that that will will be at the rental. We say, okay, five stalls. You you could. Yeah, you could, honestly, that's that's just extrapolated from the existing standard that. That's no, that's no different than what's in our current code, we didn't change that one. I think there's some logic there, y- you know, I ma- maybe 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 I have something there that they could be. Manipulating that, but in general. This is being screened at the time of business license. And they and we asked that question, how many can you, you know, how many do you grant? We could, we could follow up and see, okay, how how many people are actually here? So I think there, I mean, there would have to be enforcement there, I don't know. Cause depending on, just depending on the rental, you know, you can have, you can have bunk beds, it could be like a hostel. Or it could be one bed in the room, so.
Will you guys be able to change it to one point five stalls per bedroom rounded up? So if you got two bedrooms, you gotta have. One like, so so if you got a two bedroom house, you need two stalls. But not based on people, but based on the number of bedrooms in the patient. The number on that, you know, so if you did. Say it's one and a quarter per bedroom, you gotta round up. You don't need three parking stalls for two bedrooms. Uh I I I don't, I just, I don't like the idea of doing it based upon occupants because the occupants can be. Manipulated too easily and then the parking problem will be there. Regardless, and who's gonna go count the nightly rental with someone there for two days and whether twenty people there or visitors from. The neighborhood, is that, cause that's the second thing is a lot of VRK and cash value, there aren't that many. Patient visitors, cash value, because they're coming here to visit family. And if you've got additional families coming to a location where your nightly rental is, you have a bigger parking problem.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, I, at this point in time, I don't think it's been a big problem. And we don't have a ton of these in NIBLY, uh but I I know recently there were, we we just reviewed a vacation rental. That they told us there's something like twenty five occupants, it was a big house. And they provide basically a parking lot for them. And they were, they were, they were actually okay with that, this is just an anecdote, it doesn't cover every, but. But um they were amenable to that because they're. It it worked for them and I think in general. I mean, yes, they they can, they can say whatever they want on the application, but. But they're gonna have to have a maximum occupancy when they rent it out on the on an Airbnb or a VRBO. And so it could be consistent with that, but. I'm fine with that, yeah. I I'm I'm just saying it hasn't been a problem, I just wanted to point that out.
It may never be a problem. Again, as a city, they find the property. But it becomes, what what I what I really look at is prevent staff. From the research Airbnb and VRBO to see what they published there versus business license. But I'm one of five, what do you guys think? Is there a better way to tie it to the number of bedrooms or number of occupants based on what they play?
What if they have sofas going to a bed? And your bedrooms change? Three or something like that.
I can see both sides of that are, you know, like, to the extent of. For like entrepreneur entrepreneurial incentive to make sure you have enough parking so that you don't get like major reviews for your rental. Did you, do you find that when, like, I I mean, I don't know if you you see that when you try and rent a space, it's like people have made reviews because of parking issues or whatever. When I rented, you know, your BBs, that's not really something to look for. I guess, but.
Well, I I mean, I rented not rent based on. Would, which would be easier to please.
So when you get, when you get the uh, when you get the occupancy, do you just like divide it in half and say you need that many spaces, is that essentially it?
No, it's one for four people. You have four people, you're gonna have five spots. And everyone came and nieces and nephews were all driving cars.
And that's who we're here to, I mean, we're protecting the the neighbors.
Just say, no on street parking. Then the neighbors complain.
We monitor through the. The nightly rental code not.
Yeah, that's probably the appropriate place, I'm not sure if we blow that into here.
Wait, they need six cars and can fit six cars in here. Off the street.
Unless it's grass, right?
Strip either, we will get you for that, park strip, sidewalks, no. And if you're parking overnight, we're gonna get you anyway, but. Doesn't matter. You could, I guess, you could throw it in, I mean, it's probably better to go in the other one, but. Since this is what's in front of you, if you wanna add. No, but I think what, I think what they're saying is just spill over parking, we have, we have a metric of the amount of parking, but. There can't be any spill over parking. It is, it is, it's kind of more suited to be in that other code. In the meantime, we're gonna get a hundred of these come through the door. Yeah.
Thank you, Tyler, Brett, did you have any further?
But I can't find it in the chart and I'm worried that I. Cause I saw it here and I was messing around.
Controls the. I hope not. I mean, if you do, we can, we can go, we can go on the backup version that I have. I I think, I I thought we were trying to take that away from you guys, but I I don't know if we really did. Um I I believe, I can double check, but if if it's not in here. And it's not deleted in here, it is in the existing code. On, it it's in, it's in the ADU ordinance. Um so if it's not showing up on this document, it's it's covered. It was.
Wait, we can check your recent changes after the meeting, till we find that.
Yeah, we can, we'll we'll make sure that it's covered either way, whether whether it's by reference or it's just in the existing code, we can make sure. Doesn't disappear. The bottom line is still there.
Where possibly bicycle parking should be located and under shown.
Good point, good point, I mean, that language came from from our consultant, I I think it was. It doesn't say must, I do think it might be difficult for some developments to do it. Um I think it's encouraging them to, if if it, if they can, I. I don't know, it might help in some instances if there's, if there's an awning or something they can put it under, but. Potentially, it depend, it depends on the design and it, but I mean. You have a good point that if we want to do it, maybe we should say shall, and otherwise. It's it's weak and maybe we just take it out. Right, depending on the context, it can be difficult to to provide. I I mean, it's somewhat expensive, maybe not as expensive as a parking stall, but.
That's my, that's my.
For me personally, I I've always been, I've had this consistent message for me personally this whole time on this particular s- subject is, I just wanna make sure. That the developers have the freedom to recognize the needs themselves or what they need to. Facilitate their their project, so it sounds like we're achieving that, so I'm happy. And personally, I just wanna think, uh Commissioner Revell and staff, obviously for your hard work on this, I know this is a lot of work, a lot of detail. On the surface, it seems like dry content, but it really does have a big impact to the city, so I just wanna express my appreciation. For us, for Troy specifically and staff, yeah, so. Yes, thank you.
Cause I went to those meetings for parking, I came out more confused.
Okay, I, is is that at least for this round of discussion?
I will make a motion, I make a motion. We recommendation of the ordinance is twenty five hyphen zero four, also mending. And SC nineteen point twenty four point one sixty. And then eight point twenty four point two sixty and nineteen point twelve point zero four zero. And nineteen point thirty two point zero eight zero and nineteen point twenty four point zero. And the parking recommendations with adjustments. To what was brought up. What Troy said, I think, and then also. Well, he, he's matching the numbers.
Went, went back to the previous conversation that I'll never.
So maybe, maybe just to clarify, so I can get it up on the screen. Food establishments, changing that from three point, what what did you have, Troy, changing that from three point five to? Five or six?
There was both, I think it was. Uh I think the last question was with on whether it's a drive through or not.
Okay, we can do that.
And also remove the item for free for possible parking shelters. They suggest that.
That's already there. Which we'll we'll address. So to re- I'm just gonna restate that motion, um just for clarity, so Commissioner Schenk um voted to recommend. Ordinance uh twenty five four, mending NIBLY City Code nineteen twenty four one sixty nineteen twenty four two sixty nineteen twelve. Forty nineteen thirty two eighty nineteen twenty four two fifty parking requirements, including amendments to minimum parking. Spaces and new development establishing minimum bar- bicycle parking allowing for an alternative biking parking plan with numbers to reflect the original. Um submission from the last meeting.
Yeah, that's fair to say, do we have a second?
And the bicycle parking.
And and removal of bicycle parking. The cover, the cover, the cover.
Troy, second, okay, do we have any other discussion?
I I think before you vote, it would be good if we got on the screen those numbers, so you know, so you know what you're voting on. It sounds like, because I'm not sure exactly what. What the original numbers were, so food establishments. Without drive through. Six spaces. And then food establishments with drive through is five. So I got those, and then professional corporate or general office is three instead of two. Is that it? I'm gonna go down to the bicycle parking and just delete it too, so, see here. I mean, you you, sorry, you're good now. I mean, you, you, sorry, you're good now. Yeah.
Okay, so I think we have a motion for approval and a second. Motion for approval, Commissioner Shane, second from Troy. Any further discussion? Okay, go to a vote, all in favor. All opposed? Any opposed, excuse me? None, so that would be five. Uh, for approval, zero. Thank you. Okay. Next item. How are we doing? We doing good? Everybody?
Can I get a drink of water?
Okay, yes. Water break? Recession, thank you.
You're doing five minutes?
Yeah, we can do five minutes real quick.
You don't, okay, you don't have to, I could just, it'll take like.
All right, we're gonna go to item number six on the agenda, which is a public hearing to discuss. Resolution, resolution twenty five two. Adopting the Nibley City Active Transportation Plan. That's where we open it up for public comment. I'd ask for Levi to introduce the subject.
Yep, um, so. I, I think when I, when I give this presentation to city council, I, I didn't, I failed to do it here, but. Um, put up a, a slide of acknowledgements. We had it, we had a steering committee that guided this, this project through its development. Um, Troy and Claire were both on that, as well as, you know, several city staff, a few from council and, and Parks and Rec Committee. Um, and we, we had it, we also had a private citizen that was, that was involved. Um. But this, this plan's exciting, so it is, it is the city's first of its kind. Um. It really, the purpose, what we're talking about is to create a safe, connected, convenient network for walking and cycling throughout the community. So currently, this, we have a trail master plan, uh, that, that was developed in twenty sixteen. Uh, this, this stands as an update to that trail master plan. It also provides guidance for our transportation master plan. Really aiming to bring, kind of bring it all together into, into a cohesive network for, for biking and walking. Um, and rolling, you know, and kind of non-motorized use. Um, so I'm gonna go over the different elements of the plan real quick. Uh, so. There's goals and objectives, which really focuses on safety first, um, community accessibility, connectivity. And then guiding future development. Uh, the. They, they did, the, and I, I, on, on, I should mention this, we, we contracted with Alta Planning and Design. Who specializes really in, in this type of work and active transportation and, and developing plans and, and. And designs of projects, so. So, uh, you know, and, and our, our, our staff, as, as well as the steering committee worked closely with them to develop this to ensure that it was, you know, reflective of the community's goals. Um, so there was, there was a review of existing relevant plans, um, done, the, the general plan, transportation master plan. Uh, parks plan, so. And that, that was done, existing conditions analysis, it's looked at current facilities, land use, travel patterns. Sidewalk connectivity, uh, network gap, safety issues, opportunities, corridor and intersection characteristics and collisions. So looking at a lot of different factors to try to get at this, this recommended network. Um, but, but also, uh, public outreach was, was done to inform the plan. Uh, there was a community survey specific to this plan developed, and I'll, I'll go into the details of that. Um. There, uh, there was also a couple of other community surveys, uh, that were relevant to this plan, the, um. The USU well-being survey, some, some, there were some questions asked, uh, in the well-being survey. So some of the findings were, were also incorporated here. Um, there was a. There was a survey specific to Nibley Elementary that, that was also provided, um, summary of that. And then, um. There, the, go back to the, the survey that was done for the community, um, there was web map, a web map. Um, as part of that. Uh, survey where, where people could display, you know, issues of the network, destinations they'd like to reach, uh, while using active transportation. To, to help with that analysis. Uh, there was also a bike walk audit done, um. This is, we. This was a group of, I wanna say about twenty people that went out, uh, toward the beginning of, of the plan. And we, we kind of, we had a, a loop that went around the community, both a, a bike, a walking loop and then a biking loop. To try to identify deficiencies in the network, things, things that are working well, things that aren't working so well. Um, so really kind of on the, on the ground and. We, we invited, you know, we had this steering committee, committee members, but we also had, um, other members of the. Some members of the community, some members that represented, um. Different groups, you know, there was one that, there, there was a mem, a, a member of our community that's blind that, that came and that, that was. That was good to get her, her perspective on, you know, navigating our streets from, from that perspective. Um. We also did some outreach as part of Bike Night Out at Heritage Days, um. Just, you know, trying to get as much feedback as we could from people, you know, that, that, that. Event is more focused on kind of the fun element, but we incorporated some, some feedback from, from that. Event, um. So based on all, all of this, uh, there's a rec, what's in front of you is a recommended active transportation network. That includes a variety of different facilities, uh, that are to be, um. Recommended for implementation and then policy and program recommendations and an implementation plan. Um, so I'm gonna switch to this real quick. For this easier. So a vision statement for the plan to create a vibrant and inclusive community in Nibley where all residents, regardless of age or ability, can safely and comfortably roll, walk and cycle to their local destinations. By prioritizing a well-planned and connected active transportation network. So the steering committee, um, helped, uh, develop this vision statement. Felt this was reflective of, of the goal for the project, really summarizes what we're, what we're trying to do with this plan. A little bit of detail on, on existing conditions, um. Currently have about eight and a half miles of paved paths, bike lanes and natural surface trails. And then there's several more miles of facilities, um, of, in, in existing plans in, in Nibley City. Um, looking at. You know, the, the consultant looked at and, and with feedback from the steering committee, key destinations. To connect to both within Nibley and outside of Nibley, um. I believe that circle is kind of a three mile catchment area, which on a bike is kind of a reasonable. Um, distance to, to bike to. And then, uh, the. Just on the right, you know, looking at our land use plans, that's, that's just a map of our. Uh, future land use. Or, yeah, that's future land use map. Looking at sidewalks, uh, the sidewalk network, so. You know, you look, you go through a lot of our established subdivisions, um. Just, just the fact that Nibley's developed since we've had standards for, for sidewalk curb and gutter. The majority of, of the city does have complete sidewalks, there's. There's some areas, um, primarily in, um, undeveloped parts of town or older part, parts of town, there is some missing sidewalks or incomplete, meaning they're just on one side of the road. Um. So that, that was looked at, um, to kind of see where, where the gaps in the sidewalks are. Um. Key destinations and corridors that were looked at, parks, schools, places of worship, employment centers. And then these corridors, thirty two hundred south, twenty six hundred south, twelve hundred west, one thousand west, eight hundred west, six forty west, Main Street, Hall Road, these are kind of more of the regional connectors. That are, you know, in, important for, to accommodate, um. The active transportation users, when, when we think about using active transportation, you know. For that, for active transportation, making those connections. Um. So with the survey, uh, there were three hundred and fourteen survey respondents. And just, just a few tidbits on there, uh, get in. To more of that, and if, if you wanna open up the planning and see more of the, the findings there, um. But just, uh, participants are split between preferring more separation. But will ride in conventional bike lanes and those who are not comfortable with the existing network and prefer using low-stress facilities, paved paths, separated paths. Um, and two thirds of the respondents walk or bike for recreation at least a couple of times a week, so. You know, tho- those who took. Those who took the survey were more likely to be, um, walkers and bikers, but, you know, not, not all of them. Uh, the well-being survey. Uh, and you know, this one was, I would say more. Might be a little bit more representative of the community as, as the purpose of it was, was kind of just in general well-being. But, but there were three, three hundred nineteen responses, uh, seventy one percent listed enhanced safety as important or very important, sixty six listed. Improved walkability and more trails as important or very important, transportation developments in Nibley. So in general, the, the majority of the community sees this as an important issue to, to improve, you know, walkability and trails. Um, little bit on, on Nibley Elementary and we, we chose this, um. This, this was actually, we, we did, uh, with. Uh, some of the city staff and the mayor and, um. Few others, we, we did, we did a walkability virtual academy and part of that was a, this is prior to our, the Development Act of Transportation Plan. We, we did a, an, an action plan, um. And, and we focused a little bit on improving. Conditions for Nibley Elementary. Nibley Elementary, um, you know, we have more elementary schools and, and we, and I think this plan addresses issues on those, but this survey in particular, we focus. At first on Nibley Elementary, it's, it's a, it's an all-walk school, um, the. Me, meaning they don't have school buses that service it, um, so theoretically, everyone is in with the walking distance. Uh, but you know, according to this, fifty eight percent of students drive, forty two percent bike, walk or other, so just. Uh, thinking about ways that we can increase that, you know, all those kids live within a mile of the school, so theoretically. The, we should be able to get the majority of them walking to school with, with the right conditions. Um. And one, one part of the survey, thirty one percent listed other kids trust adult to travel with as a way to encourage their child to use active transportation, so there. I will say, there's some things in the survey that the city doesn't have a lot of influence or control over, but. There may be opportunities to collaborate with the, the schools to. There may be opportunities to collaborate with the the schools to overcome those barriers, you know, like. A kid that doesn't feel s- feel safe, you know, because of strangers or dogs or who knows what. So there were a hundred and forty-six responses on the on the web map. There are mostly barriers along arterial roadways, uh which shouldn't be a surprise, you know, those those are. The usually crossing the roadway or even traveling along roadways like thirty-two hundred south, but, you know, also the high highway and. One sixty-five, uh these, these are, you know, barriers for active transportation users and. And the public also suggested more cross-city routes, you know, get, being able to get all the way across the city. Safely on, you you know, using, using these modes, and then. This is the proposed active transportation network, there's a lot up there, um but. We can focus on any one facility if if you want to go through, but uh just as far as the improvements that are recommended. This is everything from paved paths, so all the green on the screen, those are, those are paved pathways, if it's. If it's a solid line, it means it's either existing or it's been approved, like through a subdivision, some of them haven't been built yet, but. But they've at least been approved, um the. Uh there's different types of bike lanes, so, you know, a standard bike lane, like you see here on thirty-two hundred south, just a stripe. With with the bike symbol, uh that that's shown and on on some of the streets, a buffered bike lane where. You have, you have, um again, it's just using paint, but but there's, there's a bit of a buffer. Uh painted on the the roadway, um so there's, there's more of a buffer between cars. You know, demarcated between cars and and bicycle users, and then separated bike lane, that's, that's. Like twelve hundred west, that's what we've already, you know, implemented just recently on twelve hundred west, that's where there's a physical barrier between the bike lane, so. These are, those different types of facilities are shown um on the plan, oh, as well as neighbor, so this, this term neighborhood byway. This is where thi- this is a a route that prioritizes. Movement for for bi- bicycles and and those walking, it's it's a neighborhood street, but. That will actually, you know, get you somewhere, a a connection through, and there may be traffic calming so that, you know. You don't have speeding cars going through, so people people feel comfortable on on the street, just uh riding and and getting through. I believe that's, and then, you know, there's a couple of corridors that they identified that need further study, uh one of those is. Main Street, Highway one sixty-five, and there is a uh Highway one sixty-five study coming up. So there aren't specific recommendations on what to do with with Highway one sixty-five in this plan. But just referencing that through those studies, we can develop better recommendation, same with Hollow Road, we've had, we've had ideas of. Of doing a uh what what's called a uh advisory shoulder, advisory bike lane on on Hollow Road. Uh but but as recommended, it needs some further study to, um. It's, it's kind of an experimental, what what they call FHWA, an experimental type facility. And and that's, uh so there, it it needs more study be to- before we determine that's a permanent facility there. I'm gonna read every single one of these, if you want to just wait, this is, this is a list of projects, so you can see, um the plan was. Uh the plan does include planning level estimates, um and then that last column, implementation. This is where it gives the city guidance of whether we should pursue this as a project, or should we wait for development? To implement that, and I think that's a key part of this this project where, you know, we have all these lines on the map. Uh what what should we actually chase as as a project um versus. Versus a, you know, waiting for that development, because, and a lot of that has to do with. Is it going to provide a connection that's going to be useful prior to that development? Is it, or 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 does it make sense to just wait for that development to occur? So. That has been incorporated, one thing that is not in the plan, I'll say, and and Tom mentioned, you know, we. Uh when we were going through the process, there isn't a project prioritization here, so. That's, that's gonna have to be another task that the city's gonna have to take on to prioritize. The projects for for implementation, at this point, they're listed out, there's guidance on whether it's, you know. We should implement them or wait, but but we we still need to prioritize them. Yeah, traffic calming and sidewalks, so there's some guidance on providing. Uh additional, uh you know, traffic calming on streets and which which streets are they are appropriate for. For traffic calming, uh they provided, that this chart's provided here, uh depending on the roadway. Um whether it's an arterial collector, local roadway, what type of uh traffic calming is appropriate. Uh, you know, typically, for example, on our on our arterial roadway, uh you're not gonna put in a. A speed bump, for example, but you might, you you might put, you know, some kind of vertical. Speed bump like that on a local roadway, so there's, there's different types of. Of traffic calming that that can be implemented depending on the context of the roadway. And um the policy and program recommendations, one is. To our transportation master plan alignment, likely within the next year, we'll pursue an update to our transportation master plan. And so we'll want to refer to this, this active transportation plan, ensure they're, um, you know, they're aligned with one another. Uh there there's some recommendations in in the active transportation plan, for example, to update our our cross-sections. And so, uh you know, that will need to be consulted and, um, the. Addressing parking in bike lanes was is another, uh so- something that's pointed out here through through policy, we can address this. You know, ma- making sure it's more clear that it's not legal to park in bike lanes, um it's a little bit ambiguous, we don't have a specific. Law on it, um depending on how you interpret state code, I I think it's already illegal, but. But it 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 wouldn't hurt if we considered uh in incorporating that in our own city code. Um implementing traffic calming, you know, we, we're definitely talking about traffic calming, I mean, twelve hundred west is. That that was, it's all about traffic calming, but but an ongoing traffic calming program. Not, not necessarily just one project specific, but throughout the city, focusing on 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 traffic calming. Bike parking requirements, already there, doing that, uh street connectivity standards, we've talked about this, uh. It's, it's something that's on our list to to focus on, and this is really important for for active transportation plan. Planning, uh you know, for active transportation users, street connectivity, um if you have to walk. If you have bad street connectivity and you have to walk two or three times as far, you're probably not gonna walk, so. Uh street connectivity really helps with with active transportation users, um. Update paved path standards, uh the i- in particular, you know, and going through parks. There there's recommendation for for additional width, uh rather than just five feet, go to, you know, eight or ten feet. But ten, even twelve feet, if if there's, if there's a lot of, uh, you know, different users and more more traffic going through there. And then promote established education programs as well. So staff's recommendation is to recommend approval of this resolution to adopt the active transportation plan.
Um for so for the uh public hearing, we did have um a write-in, a written, or I guess.
Did we?
We did, I don't know if you have that, or no one's here, obviously, to approach the standard, it says we have Ezra. Eames is a written.
Oh.
To read, or do we, do we want to know, okay.
He took off.
Okay, all right.
I wonder if he, but he was just signing in as attending.
Could be.
A lot of people.
No one here to to comment publicly, so we'll close that part of the meeting, move on to item number seven, so discussion. And consideration uh for recommendation for. The resolution twenty-five two to adopt the Nibley City Active Transportation Plan. We'll open up for discussion, his consideration with the the commission, shall we have anything?
Are you working on this? Good to see the city moving on forward. Yeah. I I hope you know, I would like the Blacksmith Fork Trail. So so we've got these studies, but. Are we actually trying to do these things, or they're just a study, what are they?
Wait, wait, I, these projects? So they, we 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 can and we do pursue these projects as 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 we, as we have resources to. In a lo- in a lot of cases, they're implemented through development, so. Um if if the facility crosses, you know, subdivision, we require it at the time of development, and that's. We've been doing that for several years now, and so we're starting to see patches of these, but, you know. We're trying to develop a more cohesive network, um. And I do think, and I I alluded to this, I I do think we're gonna have to sit down and prioritize which ones, because we can't do it all. But um this gives us a starting point of. If, what what a good, solid active transportation network would look like and what. It might cost and and we can, we can start chipping away at it. I mean, Blacksmith Fork Trail, uh one thing I'll say about that. That's a regional connection, and I think something like that, there's opportunity, there's, there's. There's some exciting opportunities for grants and, um. You know, there's a lot of work that would have to be done with that, with property negotiations, and and I know there's been a lot of, uh. When when it was brought up several years ago, there there's been a a lot of people maybe opposed to it in the community. Um to be clear, we see it as likely to be on the um east side of the river, not on the west side. Just with the amount of development on the west side of the river, amount of homes, it's probably not feasible there, but or it'd be very difficult. Uh but, you know, the county recently got funding for. Uh a trail from Ridgeline Park up to. Logan, you know, seventeen hundred south for for the Blacksmith Fork River. Part of it is probably gonna actually have to go on the highway because of Joe Furman's property and. Um they're not allowing trails through there, uh with the easement that was granted there, uh but. But, y- you know, they did get four million dollars to construct that trail, they're they're working on it now, and that's actually a UTA project. And I I foresee that could, in a later phase, extend down to the south. And if we want to help prime the pump on that, it could happen sooner, but, yeah.
I'm always nervous about the.
So, and forgive me, my, this, did you say it's not prioritized yet, it's just, nothing's prioritized?
No, no, and they and the consultant did offer an example of, um. Of a meth- methodology for project prioritization, so we, I think we should, we should go through that. We just, we didn't have it in the scope of work to to prioritize the pro- the projects. So this is as far as as we got, um we'll keep, you know, working on it, and as, I think the project prioritization will could. We can go through that exercise as part of a budget, like a budgeting process, but.
First street section, because a lot of these just belong to roadways, so with this proposal, are we, are you gonna? Have to review and amend the potential cross-sections of streets?
Yes, yeah, so that's what's recommended in this, there's, they've provided cross-sections, um. But but really, that's, at this point, it's it's a, it's guidance to do that. That's not cod- it, it wouldn't be codified the same way, it needs to be actually incorporated into the transportation master plan. So it's providing guidance as we update that transportation master plan, and we could do it before, we could go through and go through an amendment process. Sooner than and and update those, but but I think. It probably makes sense where we're going to be updating in the next year to just consult this and and ensure that, um. That these different facilities are are accommodated, and but they they have, the, what is provided in this plan. Is is recommended updates to to cross-section to accommodate these facilities, so yeah, that is something that we have to do.
Brett, do you have any answer? This is kind of a guideline.
Well, you know, I think in some cases, it 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 would be a requirement, because it's. We have, for example, for new development, when it comes through, we reference. That it has to adhere to the Trail Master Plan, this is, and you know, as we say, an update to the Trail Master Plan. So in that case, it is a requirement for new development, now as far as the city is concerned. It is a guiding document for us to make decisions about us, you know, ultimately, the city council to make a decision about how to invest. In these things, but but if, but if a developer comes through the door, you know, if this is adopted, developer comes through the door. And says they want to put, you know, subdivision in, we will consult this document, say, okay, there's a trail there, you need to. Provide that facility.
I think the survey said more than fifty percent. I also, sure, maybe, so ninety-five percent of the people felt unsafe walking in Nibley. We had crime rate or something like that, and H West was one of them.
I think, yeah, and I I I have to look at the question, I I I think the point is, sometimes they feel unsafe. Whether they feel unsafe all the time, there's probably, there's, there's times that they feel unsafe, whether it's crossing the street or.
And I'm I'm blaming it on it's twenty-two, I prefer south and north, is a favorite.
Yeah, but I mean, that's a good point, when people think of H West, they might, people don't always know exactly where the city's boundary is, and they they might. People don't always know exactly where the city's boundary is, and they, they might think of that.
It's not just one or five.
The worst.
I'm sure the road would have to be windy for bicycle.
An update to the trail here, but that might be a good idea.
Um, for me personally, I just think it's, uh, obviously, I like to recognize that they put into this. I'm sure there are a lot of hours spent, and uh, anything that we can do to further guide the future of Nibley. To recognize all modes of transportation, I'm su- supportive. I think the coolest thing about this, honestly, for me, someone who hasn't lived here as long as anybody else, probably the room is, just even getting an inventory of what is. Um, it's kind of exciting to see, and, and in that way, we can obviously see where we need to go. Just have those maps and kind of getting a, a baseline of what's out there. It's pretty cool, just in general, and that's kind of probably the only thing for this, but. It's kind of neat to see all the stuff that we already have, and then give, give some guidance on where we need to go, so I appreciate everyone's. This, so. You know, um, that's all I have, and does anyone have anything else, or want to make a motion? Resolution twenty five to adopt the uh, N B C Active Transportation Plan. Okay, we have a motion from Troy to recommend the res- uh, resolution twenty five oh two to adopt the D B C Active Transportation Plan. Second, Brett Brett. Do we have any further discussion?
The good idea. My only discussion is inherent. Because I, we, we, we have consultants, and there's no way around it. Gotta hire consultants, they're very expensive. And pretty much they gave us transportation plan, it says widen roadways and layout transportation plan on grid system. With the exception of the existing trail network that we already have on the trail. I don't know if there's any way around that, but like, I'm looking at this document, there's, there's nothing different in this document that we're not. Already doing, so, so I mean, and this is just, it's just worth this comment, but it's just frustrating that. You know, the situation, and we're having an, an expert taking snippets and pictures in. Commercial areas and industrial areas, which we don't have here, it's not relevant here, and our master transportation plan is. I mean, our master. Active Transportation Plan, they're, they're literally just following the grid system of our existing roadways. So. No discussion, no point to vote or anything like that, but.
Tom, you could have done this by yourself and say.
That's, that, the time, time and expertise, I mean. They. There, there is a lot of using our existing network, because really, we're not gonna plow people's homes down to build a.
Right.
To build a trail, so we got, we gotta use what we have, and it's, it's guiding where.
Yeah, and you know, and it is nice to see some future planning, right, where we had, obviously, Nidley is gonna expand south. That's where that available land is, so even just identifying those corridors, even though they already exist, I don't like the dimension. Um, and I, I do like the fact that it just helps to um. Identify, like, if you're gonna subdivide here, this, this is a part of the process.
Yeah, yeah, it does, it does include the annexation area.
So, but I, I do.
We just need to put some colony features on twenty-six to the west. Just by son Martin, taking these kids, first grader, and give to school. There's high school kids flying.
It's a pretty wide.
Yeah, wide and flat, it's right. Yeah. I said, they need to put a dip like some round, even if I elementary, so if you go by, and they take out the bottom upward. He clocks the same kid every, every day.
Do we have any other discussion? Okay, so we have a um, resolution for recommendation seconded by, by resolution from Troy, seconded by, or motion, thank you. Uh, for recommendation for approval, seconded by Brett. Um, we'll go to a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? We have five in favor, zero opposed.
Sir Jim, I have to wait ten minutes.
Okay.
So, I just thought you guys.
Yep, I think we've. Reached every item that's needs a vote, so we're good there, right?
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll go to item number eight, Brett and. Okay, he's just gonna talk to you if you have a minute. Yeah, so we're gonna go to, to item number eight, um. Uh, which is the workshop for the mixed residential.
Yeah, so this, this was brought up by the, the Planning Commission recently, when the, um. The zoning in, in conjunction, the zoning recommendation in conjunction with an annexation. Uh, just south of Nibley Farms was brought up. Uh, they, they requested an R M zone for, for a portion of that. And it was, it was brought up to, you know, uh, review the zone and, and re- reconsider some of the standards there. Um, in general, it was, it was discussed, you know, really, as a homework assignment for the Planning Commission to, to look at it and see. You know, what deficiencies there were, what changes you think should go into it. Uh, I, I just wanna mention a couple of things that, that we've discussed as, you know, city staff, that could. Uh, be considerations for change, one is, um. On, on the design standards, particularly with townhomes, um. We allow front-loaded townhomes, townhomes, we kind of discourage it in it. Again, kind of, kind of to your point, uh, Claire, if we, if we just say we don't like it. It's not the same as saying you can't do it, and we kind of discourage it, but we allow. Townhomes to be front-loaded on interior streets, you know, public roadways. And, uh, what you get with that is this. This huge swath of driveways, uh, that just is not a great design when you think about walkability, you know, um. And. And so. May, it's a consideration to either require or. More incentive, at least provide a strong incentive for rear-loaded townhomes. I think that's a better, better design, but you, you know, when you're facing a public street. Rather than having all those driveways, ha- have the parking, uh, access in the back through, through alleys. Um, another consideration is, uh. Removal of eligibility map, we've kind of discussed that a little bit. It, it seems to be just kind of this extra step in the process. Um, where someone comes in, they want an R M zone, we have to change the eligibility map, then we change the zoning. It seems like, it, it, I mean. Uh, maybe it's a deterrent to applicants from applying for R M. Uh, but, but we have a future land use map. Um, that specifies, you know, different land uses, we have high, higher density areas, if we really want. This R M zone to be le- legitimate zone, maybe, maybe we ought to. Just remove the eligibility map and just consider that at the time of, of rezone, you know, we don't have. I mean, any, any of these new ones obviously would have to go through a rezone anyway, so that's. That's just something to, to consider, um, that was originally established because of the time. Again, we were only focused on that one property north of, um. Clear Creek Park. And, and that was the only thing added, and we're slowly. Getting other, others that are being considered, and so if we're, if the city's actually willing to entertain these, these new areas. Maybe, maybe we just do that through that process, through the rezone process. They can be denied if, if, you know, if the city doesn't feel that's appropriate. But it, it seemed, it seems a little arduous to have to go through two steps to get to yes or no. But other than that, um. Uh, not a lot to recommend from staff, I think we just wanted to. If, if you just have a discussion about. What you think should be changed, and if you have any comments on, on the, the two considerations we had. I don't, I don't know if that even reflects the concern that was expressed by, by the Planning Commission. Um, so certainly, you know, whatever else we can incorporate. And I can bring up, I guess I can bring up, it's a workshop, I'll bring up the ordinance, just if we wanna like, point to anything specific.
I guess while he's doing that, Troy, do you have any general thoughts?
Lots of thoughts. I'll speak now. On this subject. I, I agree with both the points that staff brought up, um. The driveway thing has been at the center of mind in the past, against the other plans. Being very, uh. Not pedestrian-friendly with the model driveways. Section twenty-one twelve sixty, section C. Uh, specifies like alleys are basically prohibited in Nibley. Would this be a conflict to that code that, that would need to be amended?
Uh, no, so, oh wait, twenty, oh, twenty-one. Yeah, it, it conflicts with it, right? Um, it has for. Quite a while, that's a, that's a good question, we, I, we should probably qualify that statement, um, and. Where is it again, twenty-one, twelve? No, and there's no, there, not that I'm aware of in state code. I think. Some of them are, but some of them aren't. So, so this, some of them are along public roadways with all those driveways. There's others that have an alleyway, and the front door faces onto either a public road or, or public trail.
Yeah, but, but, who'd say, look at the feel of that? Versus the rear-loaded, because all they did is they put the protection on the front of the yard, like, like those. Even though those townhomes are front-built, the difference is the road is only accessible to people living in those residences, so. It's essentially like a private road versus the subdivision that proposed that came through R M, they would front-load the number twelve west. That's a completely different situation. I mean, so if you go to Ridgeline, you're meandering through, and it's almost like they're just small, single-family homes. You go to Ridgeline Park, where they're all opened up, you got the, the stormwater retention with rocks in the front, you got asphalt in the back, and you just have the structure there. It, it, for a community, it's not nearly as filling, I would think, and frankly, you can see that in results of, of. The cells, and what's moving, what's not. And so it, it's a tough thing. How to do it, and that's why, I mean, so, give you guys a little more context, the R M zone, they, our P U D subdivision and Ridgeline Park was a legislative action. What that means is the codes, the instructions are here, but it's essentially, it allows city council. Versus an R M zone, uh, R two-way, things like that, that's administrative, so if you come in and you meet the standard. Then you're, then you get approved, but it doesn't allow the flexibility for the divisions of the design. Still, Ridgeline Park, I mean, it took years, the city worked with the developer, came up with a plan. How to, how to make all work together, same thing across the street here, came up with a plan, how to work together. My biggest concern on the R M zone, we codify it, make it a little straight up. You know, that, that proposal went from twelve west all the way up to fifteenth west. But we know we're gonna have roads running north and south, you got two entrance points on this linear identity housing project. Um, we don't have really influence of trails, we don't, we don't have really a way to designate.
So it seems like. Functionally, and we need to come up with a way to administer or promote this idea of like, how do we base? So, cause the R P U D, it's like forty acre. For the projects, yeah, right, so, so what we're really talking about is how do we entertain the same concept of. Freedom of control, meaning we're working with the application, make sure it fits. The site properly, and what we need to protect our citizens, you know, everything, on a smaller than a forty acre. How do we do that?
So, what that, it, it's. Multiple types of housing, we've got condos to townhomes, to single-family homes, to senior living, and all that stuff, all kind of mixed into one. It all kind of land, runs seamlessly back and forth together. Versus, um, you look at a, a apartment complex. Where it's just, just rural houses, the exact same housing, some little taller, some little lower, and we got an angled roof in different colors. But it doesn't have a, a community feel, it's definitely not walkable.
So can we just, I mean, maybe I'm, this may be a stupid question. Ask it anyways, can we just reduce the minimum? For our P U D and get rid of R M?
That was gonna be my thing, question, why, why didn't council decide to create another?
I think, I was the only one here. The, hey, cause you would just barely start.
Well, I, I, no, I mean, I, I was, I was heavily involved in the R M. I, it didn't start till, uh, about a year after I started here.
So what happened? There was a panic station. And they were sitting like that, that happened with the Stradler. Well, they're honorable. The proponents said that their open space in the park, all that is a little park. Which is a press, you know, saying it's not. It's here. And, and now school district, like this has not come to schools, it's school districts, there's, there's. Some sort of processing, which we're modeling, passing a couple of local high schools, so it has nothing to do with school, our school, we don't. So many times someone comes in and says, we need to protect our schools, that's out of our jurisdiction, that's cash. Yes, that's done, so we don't need to worry about that. But what it was is, if we are gonna build the impact of high-density development. On the Creek Park and Heritage Park and the streets, then we wanted to adopt codes to allow them to annex. Build in Nibley, so we could have the impact of these to offset what we're eating back.
Yeah, but like, why, why create something different when all you had to do was just lower the number?
Because, so, so part, so part of the reason, so part of the reason for that is. Uh, we wanted to keep the R P U D intact, because there's some provisions in there, for example, that require like. The, a mix of housing, um, there, uh. Open space, they, uh, there's some restrictions in there that we wanted, we wanted to keep intact. And, and the reason, and the reason, and, and Tyler, Tyler is exactly right, that at the time, the city was trying to. And as much as possible without kind of selling our souls, appease this developer, and so making it. Administrative was one way to do that, rather than, rather than legislative, because it's legislative, then it's. Then there's a question mark whether it's going to, uh, what they propose is gonna get approved, it's, it's, it's discretionary, right? And so. Could, could you make? R M legislative, basically just an R P, R P U D, um, it does have. I think, I think one thing we've, we've seen with. You know, the forty acre minimum, I think there, there is some. I think a four, forty acre plus development, there is more opportunities to mixed housing. Once you get smaller than that, it gets difficult, so are we going to say? Open space, trail, all, all of those things, it, it's, it's. Open space, trail, all, all of those things, it, it's, it's difficult to do that. So that's kind of why there's that forty acre minimum. The question is, is there some place within Nibbly City Code to allow for higher density housing on smaller than forty acres? Even if you don't get quite as much of that critical mass that you do. And you don't get quite as much of the mix, because you just don't have the acreage. And I think the RM could do that. Um, but, but you know, Tyler's right, you, um, you don't have the same. Control over the nuances of the design. Now, we have sta, we have, we have a lot of standards for RPUD, you know, some, some cities, they have a PUD ordinance. And it basically just leaves it wide open, it's just a negotiation, Logan City does. They don't use it that often, but they did, for example, with the new Target development, they just came in and said, oh, what's your plan? Uh, let's talk about it, they negotiated a little bit, and then, and then they came up, but we have, we do have a lot of standards in RPUD, and which, by the way. Are very similar to what's in the RM, because we, when we adopted that one, we said, look. We had, we didn't have a lot of time, and we said, I think we would rather copy our own standards than copy another city's standards, because we, we know they work. And they're, they're tried and true, and they work for our city. So, yeah, I mean, yeah, the point, you could repeal it and say. We're gonna lower this, or or you could say, oh, it's an RPUD two or something, and.
Either just create a mini version of that, that, so we get everything we need and just say, this could, this is applicable. You know, ten to twenty acres and anything less than ten, it doesn't make sense. Whatever, hey.
Well, so, so this is the other thing, again, making sure that it's managed, so we have the RPUD value. Which we specify certain parcels, I think there are five first, five parcels delineated by the board. So, so I'm kind of like, if you're, if we're gonna say you do RM anywhere, then you should still do an RPUD. I do like the idea of keeping the larger parts itself, because it, it, it allows for better design elements. And allows for more professional organization, because of the scale of project. So I do like having a larger development. Aspect of as far as acres go. And then the second aspect of that is, you know, we, we created our transfer density bonus. So we reduced the amount of. Units you can get, five units the acre versus ten units the acre, unless you're doing density transfer, well, it seems silly to me that. We're gonna just open up an RPUD, I mean, sorry, the RM, RM zone, allow for twenty units the acre. If we're restricting what was a code that was already written really well, and we can see the results of. Um, and I'd be more in favor of, so we created the RPUD, which you see is, is. What's the one across the street? Meadows? Mountain Meadow, Meadows, you've got, um. Fireflies, no.
Firefly Estates and Ridgeline, those are the three. There's, there's some provisions in the RPUD that only apply to the town center, but, but there's not, but there's not. A lot different, it condos, like, for example, yeah.
So we wanna mess with the density, I don't think you just say you can do twenty units the acre. I think we do some, some sort of modification to the town center development, still require mixed use, buffered zones. The condos have to be next to a town, hometown, home, that's be next to a single family home, condos can be stacked next to commercial, like, like. So, so you have a neighborhood that flows and makes sense.
I, I, I still kind of get hung up on this question of, if it's a small parcel. Are we just not gonna allow higher density? Period. So we're only gonna allow it in these, in these areas.
Because, because what, I think what we want is, like, I'm looking at the South. And I don't like buying bricks and bricks. I like one, our city and meandering and angle here and angle there and stuff like. If you can get three or four proper rooms together, say, let's come up with a master plan, let's put a trail here, let's put a trail there. Let's make a partnership to do a larger development. Whether there's joint ownership or not, like, that's the intent I would like to see in South Nibbly. So we have large tracks of lands with very, very wise development, not carving up one block at a time. You wanna carve up one block at a time, then R two, R two A, you're doing open space. If you want higher density, then have a project that's enough scale that we can really make this thing work. That's, that's the only, historically, we've quote, we've quoted what they built out in the. Daybreak, you know, in the Harrington Town Centers and the Ice Skates and all these things, but what it was is you had enough scale. That the economics made sense to do it, versus these onesie twosie type things. So we're gonna open it up, I think we do require larger parcels to do it, to require more insight to it. I do like the aspect that it's a legislative decision. Now, I think. Isn't the state, didn't they change our ability to make the legislative action, was that? By a public recall.
You can, I mean, you can still do an RPUD the same way, it's just, uh, once it gets subdivision. That's, that's what all changed, so. You know, like tonight, the preliminary plat came, came in front of you, it's not going to city council, none of them can go to city council. And final plat is staff approval, so you, you can't even, you can't review it.
Forty eight development has apartments, condos, townhomes, senior living, a nice big shop and.
Now we have, now we have, the city has approved an RM zone, and that's Wesley Nelson Farm property, and so. So I feel like we at least need to keep it on the books to. Because, because that's established.
That's, that's the intent, is we're coming off forward with twenty six hundred south and USA nine, the busiest road in Cashton. We're hoping we can get a grocery store, department store, something there. Well, the best thing to buffer that with is going to be. Higher density housing. And then lower the density as you move closer to the existing.
Right, but what it, but it doesn't, it, it's not in our, it's not a RPUD, and it doesn't, and it, and it.
What we're hoping is gonna be our anchor point of the motion complex, the RM zone never.
So, I guess that's my question, is it, is there a place for RM zone in those types of contexts? I mean, I'm, I'm thinking along one sixty five, if someone, let's, let's say there's. There's a shopping center that develops along one sixty five, and there's a ten acre piece of property, and it just. It seems like the right place for some higher density housing, but really, all they can do is, is low density, right? Medium, low density. So, I, I, I'm just wondering if there's a place for this, some, in, and it, and maybe it's piecemeal, but.
Okay, Nibbly Townsend, right off of one sixty five, that's a high density. I think we did that. I, I don't think, I, I personally am not in favor of the five acre. High density twenty units the acre, like, I don't want, I don't want a hundred, a hundred units crammed into a five acre parcel. So, if the reason on twelfth west here, we only did one parcel as RM, is that because of the three parcels?
That's, that's just what they, that's what they proposed, and really what, and, 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 and really, they based their. Um, recommendation, what, they, they did come into city staff, and they, they consulted with us on what, what they can do. And they had options, right? They could propose. They could have proposed RPUD, and we, we actually said that's an option. But they said, well, well, they said, you're, you're zoning, your, or your future land use map shows high density residential here, and it shows medium density residential there. And this fits in that, and that fits in that, so that's what we're gonna propose. Said, well, you can try, and we'll see what happens, and.
They couldn't do an RPUD, it's only a thirty acre. But you, you can do it to owners, two owners just have to agree to do. But, but your density of housing, okay, who gets the higher density? The higher density housing is the most valuable piece, so it becomes a horse swap. Makes sense.
I guess the theory, right, would be if you can get some landowners to agree to. Large scale project, that you'd have a professional developer, I mean, and manage all that.
And if you make it a legislative, legislative action, then we have the ability to say. This is room continuity, let's end the rules this way.
But I, I think you're right, like, in various spes- specific contexts. That RM could.
I just, I just, I just think that sometimes that, that's the only. Piece of developable property in the area, you're not gonna get forty acres, that's, that's part of the reason what, what narrowed down to those five areas, right? Is there's, it's just not feasible, at least in, in the current city boundaries. Now, like you said, the South Fields, that's different, may, and maybe.
Why do we wanna allow, when, I mean. Do we want to allow twenty units the acre? And you're back.
And it's ten, ju- just to clarify, it's ten as a base, it's twenty if you bring TBR in the RM, in the current RM zone, but yeah. For net developable acre, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's Ridgeline Park. I think they're about, they're about eight or, or nine per net developable acre. I guess some portions of that development are ten or higher, townhomes. But we have a lot of single family already.
They're, they're different, they both, the neighbors, I mean. It, it's, it's just a different proposition, it's a different value. Ridgeline costs more than. They're just different. So, and that, that's what I think. I, I'm, I'm in favor of high density wrapped in either a modification of the town center. Ordinance or the RPUD ordinance, I'm not in favor of opening up the RM ordinance to smaller acres anyways.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm, I was thinking in terms of, like, we were talking the other day about this discussion. In my, I was kind of thinking more of a higher scale discussion of like. Do we even value RM, or, or should just be absorbed by RPUD? You know what I mean? And just kind of figure like, we gotta figure out what the future of this thing is, or do we, do we want it or not? You know what I mean? I mean, it's.
Yeah, if you don't want it, you don't have to have it. And, and just a little history, it was twenty units to the acre, Firefly Estates was approved. And then, and then the planning commission, city council looked at it and said, eh, we don't really like that, let's, let's go, let's, let's increase it to forty. So.
Townhomes, the condos, the twin homes, they have common roofs. And you end up getting neighborhood divided under single family leadership in those, because. I think it takes five, clarity can't be shores. So if you don't have a large scale H O A to manage that for the entire community, you're, you're risking neighborhood divide as well. Because you need to have a controlling force that has the best interest to fix it. Now, there's two ways to do that. If it's a apartment complex, and you're talking twenty thirty, so you're talking multi dollar project, the owner of the project is gonna fix the roof. But if you're talking five, ten townhomes off by themselves, there's no H O A, there's no, no mechanism to say that. You have to paint yours, you have to fix your roof, you have to do this, then it gets, then it, it just, it turns into a problem.
I mean, you have the same thing with single family homes, though, I mean, you talk about that kind of stuff, I can walk out to any street.
Yeah, it's a problem. It's a connected wall, my house is taken care of, your house is not, your house burns down, now I'm screwed. Your house leaks and it comes through my common wall. I, 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 I've seen it through the self improvement. If you don't have a project scale, have some sort of. Management aspect to it, some sort of scale, over time, it does make it work. And you're right, single family home is the same thing. Like, one side of the street's nice, one street side of the street's not. What I'm talking about is when you're sharing space, you need to have an overarching goal.
Is that something that the city needs to be concerned about, like?
Yeah, that's.
I, but I think we already have neighborhood, like, I, we have some of these homes that are super old. And we have a abandoned house down the street. It's, it's the same thing.
It's, it's not, because of my rights. You're right, anything can go bad. What I'm saying, from my experience, if you have a, a community of twin old townhomes. Connected shared walls, if it's not large enough that you can have an H O A or something to fix and repair it, it becomes a problem solver. You know, a single family home, the home gets bad, they move away, someone comes and fix. It, yeah, it's, 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 just, I, from my experience, it's just a different context, when you're, you're having a shared community. Attached walls, attached garages, then, then separately. You know, and we have expanded that, you can have technical higher density, you can build RPUD in the backyard, you can have apartment basement. Like, we, we just spend a lot of time for that, for the housing.
So. I don't know, I, is there, is there some consensus here on the direction? Ty, Tyler's brought up a lot of points. And some of you chimed in a bit, but I just wanna make sure there's, there's some consensus of, of the direction to go. With this, um.
So I, I, I understand that now, I pay, thanks for the context, I, I see your point on the legislature, just the administrative. And. That does sound good on paper, but at the same time, if, if we are looking for. Right, the, the whole idea of having higher density, multi family homes. Is to build those kind of homes leads to cheaper prices of those homes, right? Uh, uh, a for, a, a range of. Yeah, a, a range of affordability. And. When you push to legislative changes. Like, you said, the Ridgeline was, was years of negotiations, right? That, that pushes lots of cost up for, for that development, which then negates the whole point of making. You know, the lower costs for these higher density homes. Um, so. If you, if you made it as an administrative change, right, like, like I said, a lot of the stuff from the RPUD is already in the code. And so we already have a lot of that in there. You know, if, if that cuts out like a year of back and forth between city council and developer, like, that's a lot of. Cost savings, which you would hope translates to faster development and lower cost in the housing. So.
Yeah, I think, I think for the.
The reason why Ridgeline took so long is there wasn't. So, the, the share code, it has to be negotiated, we want this, we want this, the Republican, the, the little posters put up. Like, it was the entire process. It's not. The only thing is, is that it brings to the table to say, I wouldn't put this here. And if if the proponent on that submission come in, work with Tom and work with Levi, and the experience they have, and talk to the mayor and. We would have a plan. We would have found a design and we're gonna grow here, we're gonna chill system here. We would have something to say to it. If it's not a legislative action, it re-toed and we have proven like.
Right, I mean, but I guess the question is, with Ridge Lane Park, and again, I, all all of those got approved. Like, a month or two before I started. Actually, actually, Nibley Meadows got approved while I was here. But, um, the question is, how much did they deviate from what's already written in paper? Because what what what's on, what's in there, we're going to enforce anyway. I know Nibley Meadows, I know Nibley Meadows, they reconfigured it. The council said, oh, we don't like the townhomes on thirty two hundred, why don't you push them down here? But in general, we still use the code as the backdrop, like, you meet the code. And then, of course, they negotiated. They said, well, we want a restroom and we want park, and we will approve it if if you add these other things. But in general, I feel like we use that code, and it took time to develop it for for each of these, and that's, and that that may have informed all those discussions. But I don't know, uh, I I feel like if you look at Ridge Line, if you look at Firefly and Nibley Meadows, what you see is mainly can be reflected through what's already written in our code. So perhaps an administrative process could work. I don't, I mean.
I.
I think you need to work through the open space and the amenities, and that's uh, it's particularly if they're talking about dedicating open space to the city. Uh, those, the, that all needs to be negotiated because that's going to be a city responsibility, but I mean, we've got all these open spacer requirements, we've got architectural standards that every, there were no no, no one said, oh, I don't like how that roof looks, why don't you change that? It was all based upon what was in the code. Um, I guess they could have, I guess we could, we could say, you know, I don't, I don't like, even though it's in the code, I don't, I don't like, uh, whatever vinyl siding, put brick or whatever, but. Um, I just, from from my viewpoint, I didn't, I don't see, other than those, there's some nuances that were brought through, I don't see a ton of deviation from what's in the code, from what was approved.
Well, I I I can tell you this. It's the nuance. Because it is legislative, they have to present a plan that will be regularly approved. So you're not negotiating much because it's not as administrative. They know what the barrier to be accepted is, and so they start at a higher level.
They're bringing their A game.
And that, that's different, correct, you see that. Because they have to bring a set of barrier of a minimum standard, we may improve and you better be posted at start.
So would it be fair to say I'm hearing, um, maybe we actually don't need to change anything about RM? Because we're really only looking to implement it on areas that truly make sense. Right? Where they'd have to go in and apply, and we'd have to say yes to this parcel because it's actually next to this commercial, whatever. And actually, we don't have to change anything technically, so, yeah, and then, and then realistically, a mediate, mediating the idea of this discussion to, um, conclude that maybe we just reduce the limitation. Or the minimum, I guess, acreage for, like, an RPUD to something like twenty acres or whatever.
Costly.
Or ten.
They shrink the paths, like we already said, you can have smaller paths on the whole space. Make smaller paths on the single pound balls for the the variations of.
To allow for multiple housing.
Yeah, I I think.
Was ten acres comfortable? Is that too small? Twenty minimum? As a, as just a way to continue this discussion?
I I would propose that we, we review the town center overlay zone. And first look at modifying that versus opening up all of your.
Yeah, I think, and I think, and we're going, and and sorry, we're going through a town center master plan exercise right now with the countywide planner. All right, the idea there is let's form a bit, uh, an updated vision of what we see for the downtown center, and then we can update the code based on that vision.
And I see this in practice, I think we've seen this concept we were talking about in practice actually this year where we have originally and then see what originally feels like, and we've actually adjusted our code in order to this year based on what that feels like. So maybe this is just a simple compromise of like, we just need to maybe entertain the idea of changing the minimum to something we're comfortable with, see it in practice if it happens, and then we can adjust from there.
Can't derail this.
Please.
So, just. Feel still, I'm coming inside, I came from a different world here, where, uh, high density was thirty units an acre. And low density was is eight. So what I see here in Nibley, we have two units an acre as our base. You get an R two A, you get up to four through negotiations, and then we have this big jump to ten units an acre. Perhaps we need to, maybe we take this RM to a whole different level. And make this our medium.
Yeah.
Look at six to eight units an acre.
Yeah.
Have smaller, smaller, larger parcels, rather than forty acres.
Let's work in phases.
So, so, rather than, I don't know, I just, like I said, I don't want to.
That's a great point, yeah.
Well, we already have the zone, let's, let's now take the zone instead of RM, I don't know what RM stands for, but sounds to me like residential medium.
Yeah.
And maybe we, we rename it to something that's mid area between that RPUD and that R two A. Just a, just a thought. This was the first, you know, Firefly was the first, RPUD, the Rumail is the second, Town Center was the third, and see how the design changed as we learned how.
Yeah, even, I would love to be able to. Like you're saying, these densities, you gotta deal with it, see what, you gotta get in there.
And Tom, I do think. It's a thing of the past.
Yes.
If we get sixty eight, sixty eight acre, I use the, or something like old space and have this, the the little park on in between the trails walking out, like that's what I think we all want to get to.
Yeah, I guess the question is, I I I think, I I've seen that deficiency in our code as well that Tom pointed out, it's just kind of this middle. And that's part of the reason why, um, I like the changes to the open space subdivision that allowed smaller lots with R two A, because it's kind of getting more at that middle area, the small, just small lot, single family, but um, I guess the question is, and I'm not sure how much, you know, like, they do this in Logan or or other places. The, the RPUD, um, the incentive is you get the additional density, but there's all these open space and all these amenity requirements. Question is, do we allow, do we edge toward allowing standard subdivisions with with zoning by right that allows higher density. I mean, and even higher density, even if it's, even if it's just small lot, single family, even if we're not even talking about townhomes, but. Yeah, there's that too. In lieu, yeah.
So, we just gotta be careful, because we might just get two units an acre, and what that's gonna look like along twelve west corridor is a white vinyl core, just gonna have this tunnel. Gonna give you added all the way to higher, white vinyl on either side. You know, we need to be smart about it. And maybe focus on those main corridors where we could have maybe some street, some street facing front doors, but rear loaded. So RM is perfect for that, where you can get those townhouses with the front doors near thirty two hundred south, or twelve hundred south, excuse me, or twelve hundred west. I'll give my directions, and then have rear loading on the driveways, it it just, you're gonna have a much
I would love to see.
Herb appeal instead of having, I I I'm one of the products, I, when I go home, that's all I see is white vinyl fences. And and weeds, because no one tends to approach this either. You got those subdivisions where eventually, they almost made an entrance and there's a road off of ten plus. Yeah, so that, that was a necessity, they had to tear down all those homes, and then there's a remainder. Yeah, it had to go. So keep going further south, and what do you see? You just get that fence all the way to common sense, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, it sounds like a big project. I don't think this is something that yeah, um, I I think, I, yeah, anyway. We can, we can even do, we can even notice it as a tour or whatever, like, I know, we haven't done that in a long, I don't even know if we've done it when I was here. I mean, I started during COVID, so we weren't doing a lot of that stuff, but, but, um,
What it, what does the.
We could do a tour thing. Yeah, they, the parks, they they do, they do a bus tour where they go around, and to to me, that's a different, that's a different tour, but that. I haven't been on it yet, is it CETD or, I don't know.
I think you have to rent a CBT.
And I don't know if we need a whole bus, if it's just the planning commission, but we can get a van.
So, one thing, one thing I'm pretty interested.
I think, I mean, Logan does this every week, they notice a tour, site tour or something.
So their planning commission, before a planning commission meeting, they actually tour every site, they they take the commissioners and anybody else that wants to come, they'll they'll tour the sites.
I guess we can open it to public, I mean, you see how many show up, I don't know, maybe, maybe they would, maybe they would show up if if we had a fun bus, but.
Well, Tyler, if you, if you could, if you could answer a question, we we talked a lot about Ridge Line and Nibley Meadows, but I'm wondering what the HOA fees are, I'm hearing they're pretty astronomical. My point, yeah, that's, that was gonna be my point, we're we're trying to get this affordability, but we're mandating all these amenities, which now force an extra fee. I really like the payment in lieu, and and it might not work in every case. Um, let's take a certain parcel on twelve west and twenty six hundred south. That one's right next to a big old open park area, I mean, he's got two parks within a block. That, I, I'm I'm thinking, maybe we reduce the open space requirement, increase a little bit of density if and then take an in lieu payment for.
Take a payment, yeah.
And then maybe balance that additional density need with this in lieu payment, and it's just some things I've been thinking about as an outsider trying to get in.
Well, this has been a good discussion, I think, I don't know, Levi, if you have any technical action items, yet.
I don't feel like I do yet.
I think, realistically, like. I think it where it makes sense, only where it makes sense to me, and then that's kind of how we've already established it.
You can see him come forward and get resolved.
Well, they, they would, they would have to, I, may maybe, maybe clarify that, opening it up.
The current, the current.
Just like, if you, if they qualify, go.
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of.
Am I hearing you to say that we is, we refine this RM zone and then update our zoning map to designate certain areas? I I would suggest that, they just say, these are our new designated areas, you could be our RM zone.
I mean, we.
Build up to that density, they don't have to, they could still do two units an acre if they want, they could do, but.
What what I'm suggesting is, we already do that, we already specify in our future land use map, medium, low, high density. We need to do that. I, I want to do that with our general plan update, I want, I want our future land use map to be more clear. What, what is the scope of what we're allowing?
And it's almost like if we're it's almost like a conference discussion now. Does it even make sense that we get in a, 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 something like this before?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know about a moratorium, because we, I I feel like, I feel like, uh, development's happening, the housing, housing is in demand. Like, we've, we gotta figure things out, but I don't know if we put, we, we can't put, I I don't think it's wise for the city to try to put everything on hold. We have to work with what we have, and then, and then, uh, but I mean, the rezone, it's a legislative process, so.
Yeah.
They don't have to rezone, they don't have to approve rezones, no.
Based on very. That's a fantastic idea. And and you could limit, no, that's a great idea. And you could even tier that, and say, twenty acres, you can get thirty percent town home, townhomes, seventy percent single family, forty acres, you can get sixty percent townhomes and uh, no, that's a great thought, that's a great line of thinking.
Yeah, I guess that's the other thing, it doesn't need to just be forty acres, it could be, this is what require, if you have forty, this is what require if you have twenty.
And somehow, you, I guess, in, you gotta design it to incent, like in your, in your mind, incentivize.
And it seems that this where you go. First square foot, Ridge Line Park.
Yeah.
Yeah, the market will soar out its own niche, if there, if you want an HOA to name, there's a whole bunch of big block works and private reservations and. The market will dictate that. If the market is asking for a building, the market will build a building. So, yeah, they do, all we approach is just open the whole thing up. And monitor the setback variations of housing. It might be good to just kind of set a base zoning layer, though, just change the zoning map and say, this is where we like it. And and there's nothing in state code that for, that allows a city to prohibit someone from applying for any other zone.
Right.
They can take anything and apply for any zone, and then they become, that becomes a legislative decision.
Right.
You know, maybe we establish, this is how we want to see the city grow, we're now doing this
Yeah, I mean.
RM modified to however you want it to look like in these areas.
Yeah.
But I wonder, I wonder if we do that through the general plan process, we we let that run its course, so we, so we understand, I mean, yeah, we can just open it up to, like you said, but I I think we should vet that. Go through the the public process and.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and and so. I guess, I guess what I'm, I mean, back to what you were saying, may maybe we back off the RM and just say.
Well, even at a minimum, we don't have to leave, we can just leave RM as is, because we can just.
It's already limited.
It's already, yeah.
It's already limited, right?
So we could just say no.
No, if you go to San Francisco right now in Washington, like there are one acre lots selling for a million dollars, there are five thousand square foot lots selling for a hundred or ten thousand bucks, like, like, there's certain, like, the the dynamics will adjust themselves, and the, there's a market for half acre and one acre lots and two.
Adjust themselves and the, there, if there's a market for half acre and one acre lots and two houses per acre. That, that like, that will happen and having some of those isn't a problem, like get a lot of open space for them.
Yeah, you might find someone that wants that. More rural feel in within their.
Right by my neighborhood.
They're all like three quarter acres. Where we were talking about the.
Oh, yeah, 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 those are three quarter, almost an acre, some of those.
But the zoning, I think, does. Limit what is actually going to be developed, because a lot of those areas in Nibley that are half acre, three quarter acre lots, there are two zoning. And I wonder if we would have had more quarter acre lots mixed in, right? And, and I, and I think. The sewer, the sewer, yeah, but.
All like, is the, what's, what's the visionary home that holds over there?
Mount, Mount Vista?
Mount Vista? Incredible subdivision. But when we approved that, we were packed, saying that every pro lots are. If anything, the empty neighborhoods are impacting the housing value of. Vista, whatever. Yeah, it's all those half acre lots. But yeah, well, before, when we threw that, like, the whole thing was loaded up, first after first, you're gonna hurt our property values, you're dumb and down. It's not true, quality has nothing to do with lots.
That's it, we love our neighbor.
Yeah, no, I, let, let's, let's look into doing a tour, maybe. And I don't know what people's schedules are, if, if it's something we could do like ahead of a meeting, I, I don't know if we need an hour or two. Or what, but.
That could be a fun idea. Okay, um, it's nine thirty, uh. Would the commission be okay if we pushed the next workshop to the next meeting so we can get to the meeting schedule?
Before we wrap that up, so you think we can stack that to the general, so when you start discussing.
So, yeah, and I had that set, so the general plan, uh, we're, we're about ready to kick that off. And we've got, uh, so. Claire and Nick, we're gonna be on the steering committee for that, fortunately, we do have to narrow, again, open public meetings to act, we, we had to narrow it down to two. But, but the planning, but we'll bring things to the planning commission as well, we just needed kind of a project steering committee for. You know, to guide, to guide the project. Along, um. So, yeah, we're, we're gonna be kicking that off. Within the next month or so, we've got, we, we've, we've got to select a consultant and. We'll go through that. You love, you love him, but. Well, and eventually you gotta have a product and it takes a long time to get a product out. If you don't have some outside help, when you've got to prioritize, like our city staff has, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is.
Okay, we're gonna get to item number ten, um, discussion, discussion and consideration for the twenty twenty five.
Yeah, um, let me pull that up. So this is. This is kind of a continuation of how we've done things this year, it's about every three weeks. Let me do that. Just a second, uh. City plan, is it this one? Here's the dates, actually, you know what, I'll bring up the other ones, you can see how it works with city council. Maybe this will be more clear. There's a calendar, so the, the yellow ones are planning commission meetings, the pink ones are city council meetings. Uh, so. We're largely following the lead of city council who's already. Adopted their schedule, but it's about every three weeks. Which the, the, the city, and I, I think we, I think we've already discussed that the planning commission generally thought. That worked every three weeks, sometimes it's a little more, um, there may be a few cases where it's less and we can call. You know, we can call meetings if. If we think there's too much and we gotta do more, so just keep that in mind.
It could be a slower year.
Yeah.
Right, right, but, um.
Seen that so far.
I keep hearing that, I've heard that since I've been here, but I'm not seeing it. I was just waiting for everything to just reach to a halt as soon as I got to this job and it hasn't happened yet. But, um. So, so yeah, that, that's what it is, uh, if you do see any. You know, any, anything that you can't be there, ma- maybe shoot me a. Um, just shoot me a message, say, hey, I won't be at this meeting or that meeting, and if I get multiple. Ones like that, I think we have some leeway where we can shift things, go, okay, we're gonna do it a week later, a week earlier. Maybe that's something we could do here, be, since we do, since we don't have a meeting every Thursday in this room now. Uh, like, for example, let's say. Three of you aren't available on February sixth, we could shift that to the thirteenth if, if you are. Okay, so there's one, but we'll see, it, I think I'll do that if there's two or three, you know, if there's one, I mean. We can't always have everyone here, but.
Okay, thank you Levi. So we'll open it up for discussion amongst commissioners and you have any issues with this schedule?
Same to work this year, so.
I will say, I'm granted, I've only been a part of something like this for a year. The commission last year. We only had to cancel one, so that was pretty cool. Any, any discussion or I guess?
It forces me to pay attention to the. It used to be this Thursday.
I guess, I guess, I, I could, I could be better at sending reminders, maybe Monday or something, I don't know. Cause I know it did kind of sneak up on people.
Okay, you have any question? Do we?
Yeah.
We have a motion by Commissioner Shane to accept the twenty twenty five planning commission meeting scheduled, seconded by Commissioner. Discussion. Okay, go to vote, all in favor? Any of those? Okay, that's four in favor of Noah Post. Um, staff reports.
Yeah, just a couple of things, I already mentioned, uh, general plan, we're about ready to kick that off, um, so. That's, that's exciting and we'll, you know, we'll be back. With, I, I expect to, to have, you know, several discussions with planning commissioners as we go through that, um, cause really. That is one of planning commission's primary roles is, is overseeing the general plan, so. Uh, we. The what? Oh, um, I need to send out, I need. I wasn't sure if I got a response on, from everyone on, on when it's due. Uh, or, or when, when they can meet, but I was gonna. Set up that meeting and then, I'll, I'll see if I can do that tomorrow, so that's clear, it, it was gonna be. The week after next is when I was hoping to get that scheduled. Yeah, so if you can get it. Um, put together there, um. The. We're also working with the county on a town center master plan, I mentioned that. Uh, that one's, you know, that one's different, it's not a consultant, it's, it's county staff that's helping us with that, they've had some staff changes, so. That one, that one's moving, but it, it kind of has some fits and start. Because, um, you know, we're not, we don't have a, we don't have a consultant that we can tell we're not gonna pay if they don't. If they don't deliver something. You're fine, you're fine. So anyway, we're, we're working through that and it's great, and, and Brandon from the county has, has, has been awesome, he's ecstatic about, about this project. I just, I don't think it's gonna be a. Deliver and hey, we're done, I think it's a process and it's good, you know, we're gonna keep talking about it and figure out what. And I, and I think we'll have some kind of. Discussion on this at the planning commission at, you know, uh, once we get to a certain point, we may, maybe we'll do like a joint meeting with planning commission city council or. I don't know, we're, we're, we're figuring that out as we go, um. We. Uh, we just got an application for a rezone for Wesley Nelson Farms. Uh, from commercial to R M. For a chunk of. Of the property that was zoned commercial. Um, that they would like to build their townhomes in. So. That will be in front of you. So after this whole R M discussion, but. So anyway. Just.
Which, which I was gonna kind of ask about, like, if, if we're gonna put the R M thing on the side, we already have one developer. That was requesting and now we have two.
Yeah, that, that's for, let's not get into that, that you can decide that at the next meeting, how you wanna approach that.
It's just the R M is the golden egg for.
Well, we technically, I mean, we have an R M.
I mean, they were already zoned R M adjacent, the, the proper, the, the area adjacent is already R M, there's, there's a, there's a chunk. That they would like to add.
So what's gonna go through the? Process of recognizing a parcel?
Yeah, re, yeah, rezone.
That's still in the works. Let's come into a head, I think, uh, we have enough information. Go ahead with your.
No, no, you're fine, continue.
He was asking about the room.
Oh, yeah, whatever happened to that?
Go ahead, comment.
Okay, there's probably some things you can't.
Council not decide on?
No, they, they.
And, uh, they've been working on since.
And then they resubmitted, they made a resubmit last week. Or is just before.
Oh, you're talking about twenty five hundred south, okay, I'm sorry, I, yeah, yeah, so they should be on the next agenda.
They made a commission, they made a submission. Just there, didn't have quite enough time to get it on the last city council meeting, but they'll be on the next. Well, then this rezone was. The rezone was submitted like the day after our deadline for. That'll be, you'll see that rezone. Next.
I mean, other than that, you know, there, there's other. I probably ought to report on other developments since you guys don't, don't see them, I know it's getting late, but, um. You know, we're, we are receiving final plats for, for several subdivisions we're working through right now, um. Nibley Meadows phase four is, we're about ready to approve that and that, that one is the majority of their townhomes for Nibley Meadows, so they. They're building phase three townhomes and they've got building permits for, for all of those, that's just a few of them. But they've got a hundred and something townhomes in phase four, all in one phase, so you'll see a lot of those townhomes coming up. Uh, pretty quickly, uh, Nibley Coach, uh, is another one, we're really close on, on getting. You know, all of that final and approved, uh, Ridgeline Park phase seven, we're. Very, these are all ones that we're really close to, you know, getting to recording and, and starting, and then, um. Todd Stimson subdivision Johnson Meadows. Also. Close, uh, so.
We, anyway, they decided on, was it, do we get like a half mil payment for that twenties? We got that?
Yeah, oh, we also got a submittal for a commercial development in Ridgeline Park, um. It's, yeah, Godfrey Orthodontics, so that will be, it may be on the next agenda, maybe the one after that, but we, we've been reviewing that as staff. Um, so it's, yeah, an orthodontic office, there's, you kind of kept. One pad for the orthodontic office and keeping another pad for future development on that parcel. So we'll have some neighbors over here, but. Um, I think, I think that's all I've got.
Projects, um, just advertised for construction, a missing half road on thirteen hundred west. It's about thirty one, or thirty two hundred south to thirty three hundred south there, so. There's a, a wetland that will be encroaching in, we've gotten our permit from the Army Corps and. We, we just advertised bids, so we'll have that closed and hopefully a contract by end of next month. Start constructing that. Um, twelve hundred west phase five, that we're finishing up design. Just had a meeting with the engineers today and they said that by the middle of February, we should have a package ready to bid. Most likely gonna be a little later than that, probably in the March. But hopefully we get that advertised and constructed over the, the summer. But yeah, that'll go all the way up through Firefly Estates and then Firefly Estates is already continued, made that connection to twenty two hundred south. We, we ran into some issues, the, the whole intent of this connection was to have. Unstopped. Traffic all the way up to the highway on tenth west and Logan. I, after they opened up Firefly Estates, I realized that there's a really big grade differential from. Logan's side to Nibley's. To the center line of the road and then ours is a little more gradual, I was thinking Duke's a hazard when I was coming south. So it'll probably stay stop controlled either. It, it'll have to stay stop controlled in the north south direction, may consider leaving it as a four way stop. We haven't gotten that far, but I'm coordinating that with the, the Logan City Engineer. That should cover it, uh, Ridge Line Park, well, I'm, I'm actually giving an update to the Parks and Rec Committee next week. We've had to redesign everything due to the. Wetlands of the youth ladies dresses, but we're honing in on a, a design. I had about an hour, well, half hour meeting today, trying to make some final tweaks. Just to avoid the youth ladies dresses and stuff, but I think we have a park and we're starting the, the permitting process next month. At best, we might have approvals to begin it fall next, uh, fall of this year. If we have our figures crossed. Other than that, I, I'm just waiting for phone calls on traffic comment or whatever.
Taylor, anything?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, and we'll call this meeting adjourned.